Hi, how are you? Good. Nice to see you. I'm Tess Anderson. Just needed to get over it.
It's just great.
I'll take another one and give it back for some reason.
I think Lindsay's going to fly me through some of your side.
We regret it. I don't think there are any for that window. I said I've seen yours. Sorry. It happens every year this time. In Lake Israel.
It's been a long day. We got to train.
I don't know what the timeline is. I'm sure you can tell.
All right, folks, it's six o'clock. So let's get started for our 10:00 succeeds. See you in two weeks. To vote, call us. Mayor Brook. President. Deputy Mayor, yes, sir. Your Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember, here. Councilmember, here. Councilmember, here. May I ask you, I?
President.
Attorney Law?
Here.
Thank you. And let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to take and proclaim the nation. Thank you. Tess. Come on in. Our proclamation is in recognition of Teresa. So we call her Tess Agson. So whereas Tess Agson graduated from Port Angeles High School, moved away from the area shortly after, and in 2004 returned to her hometown of Port Angeles and began working for the city on March 8th, 2004, and whereas she served the city of Port Angeles for over 14 years as a senior accountant in the finance department. During this time, the city received a certificate of achievement of excellence in finance reporting for eight years and the distinguished budget presentation work for nine years. And she played a key role in each year the city was recognized for this excellence. And whereas Tess integrated problem solving through years of services to ensure large city projects were completed under budget, her involvement in the landfill love stabilization, the CSO, the Eighth Street Bridges, and the water pump projects contributed to their successful completion in a fiscally responsible manner. And whereas Tess first arrived in 2004, one of her first tasks was to implement one of the most complicated accounting standards put forth by the Governmental Accounting Standard Board, the G A S B 34, which changed how entities reported their basic financial statements and management discussions and analysis. And whereas Tess restructured and took ownership of the capital facilities went through very quick form and the transportation improvement plan in 2014 to streamline the process and provide financial accuracy, affordability, and transparency in regards to capital projects. And whereas Tess stepped up as interim finance director in March of 2017, and we are very grateful for that, and has provided stability for the financial management of the city and the finance department. Now therefore, I, Sissy Brook, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, and Nathan West, manager, on behalf of the staff of the city of Port Angeles, do hereby thank and recognize Tess Agson for many years of service and dedication and wish to acknowledge her for the outstanding services to the city and community. We wish Tess and her husband safe travels and hope they both have a wonderful adventure in retirement.
I'd also like to share a few words in appreciation for Tess. Tess has done a phenomenal job of stepping up at a significant time of need in our finance department. She has always been the utmost and the most responsible steward of taxpayer revenues and funds, the way we spend our money at the city. I think it's so important to honor Tess tonight and recognize her for the hard work that she's done. I think too, most impressive to me has been her creativity and her problem solving, getting us through some very challenging and difficult capital projects. Capital projects were Tess's responsibility to help us finalize the budgets for them, to ultimately make them be successful and help them come in under budget ultimately and be done well. So I'm so appreciative for Tess's ability to manage those projects, to leave the city in a financially sustainable place, but also for her ability to step up and provide leadership at a difficult time and then provide stability for the staff in the finance department. We really appreciate her stepping up and we wish her the very best as she moves on to have fun with some new adventures. Tess, thank you, and we'd like to present you with the spring proclamation.
I want to thank everybody in the city and I'd like to especially thank the council members who spend numerous hours going through everything and making sure that things happen the way they need to happen. The director and Nathan, they do a fantastic job. Carrie, as a new city clerk, we have a lot of turnover right now, but we're leaving everything in really good hands. So I'm really feel secure with Nathan and his role, even though I see my old boss, Dan, out there. I know he's enjoying his retirement as well. And wanted to say, Dan is a wonderful mentor and he helped me in the process quite a bit the last couple of years. But I think the city is in really, really good hands and I feel confident that they will succeed, even if I go off and numerous adventures that I have plans. So thank you all.
So, Madam Mayor, we'd like to invite everyone to come out and enjoy some cake with Tess to say goodbye and to celebrate her retirement. Thank you all.
It's cake time. You'll be back here in about 10 minutes. Get 10. All right, councilors, we will go ahead and get started. Now, I will be coming in shortly. There it is. So we will, we're moving forward to the public comment section of the meeting. And the first person signed up is Devon Graywolf.
Hi, my name is Devon Graywolf. I live at 438 Lopez, Port Angeles. I am a member of the Tree of Isadora Council. I am here to present our proposal regarding our beloved sequoia in Lyons Park that the city has decided to destroy. We intensely desire to establish our beloved sequoia tree in Lyons Park as a heritage tree in honor of President Abraham Lincoln, who on June 19, 1862, established Port Angeles as the slave-free capital of America in the event that the Union was defeated. Mount Baker has peaks named after Civil War heroes. One year later, Lincoln signed a bill protecting the giant sequoia of California, granting the trees inalienable rights for the people to enjoy for all time. There are also some sequoias named after Civil War heroes. We propose a community commemoration celebration to place a plaque in our sequoia honoring President Lincoln and our beloved tree. We envision performing this ceremony, June 19, 2019. Happy 157th birthday, Port Angeles, Washington, and a quote from the man himself, "Laughter is the everlasting evergreen of life." And I also brought several petitions against the city removing our tree. More are on the way. We hope the city will remove our beloved tree from their list to destroy her soon, as it is causing a great deal of grief and anger in our neighborhood. We can raise the money to repair the driveway and the pipes of adjacent property, and I want to publicly thank Elizabeth Dawn and her partner Tyson for spearheading a petition drive bringing this disastrous city decision to the public's attention.
Cory, these are for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next person on the list is Roger Niderver.
Hi, my name is Roger Niderver. I live at 519 East Park, and it is my second year here in PA. And I'm enjoying my time here and I love it. I do have three concerns. My first concern is the speed of traffic going down the park by the high school. We've asked to have radars put out there and everything else, and it's gotten even faster. We've got hundreds of kids walking up and down. They neck down to the crosswalk that would be on the south side and they have to dart across the traffic to get on the other side, on the north side of the park. I think at the very least, they should put something like the headlong race with the lights and the flashing lights, because we've seen the speed of the AC being 70 miles an hour down there. We've seen kids racing side by side down the hill. We've had traffic, almost accidents going into St. Andrews, going into the parks. It's really dangerous. That's one concern. The other one, I went down to Jesse Webster Park to enjoy my lunch one day, I'm new to the area, and I went in and there's no benches, there's no bathrooms, there's no nothing. So I went back and I talked to my neighbors and I said, what's going on? And they said, you don't want to go into that park. It's dangerous, there's undesirables, blah, blah, blah. I'm a taxpayer. I pay four times the amount of property taxes here that I did in Phoenix from where I'm at. Don't pay any taxes here. I understand that. But I should be able to go down and take my family, cookouts and all that. And I got kind of, said, no, I'm saying if it's, I mean, I don't know how much you're spending on maintaining that, but if it's unusable, then do something else with it. So I just, I don't know where to go with that. My third one is the city of Phoenix, or city of PA Commerce. And I, I see a dying city. I don't see a growing city. I love to swim, some of the other areas, there's growth, there's things for people to do. Black Ball Fairies got a commercial, "Come to Victoria, spend your money over here." Do we have one coming here? I don't think so. And if you did, what are you going to do to hold it? And the other part is, is taxes are high. And if we don't have a business base here, then where do you think the money's going to come from? Us, the home, the residents. So what are we doing to grow the city? What's the future look like? Are we going to have growth? And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, next one's on the list is Anya Samowitz.
Good evening, councilmembers and citizens of Port Angeles. My name's Anya Samowitz, and this is my daughter, Marisa Lee Samowitz-Eckemberg. We call her Sammy for short. And we're just grateful for the chance to be here tonight, on the night that you are considering our proposal to hold an outdoor preschool at Macon Park. We think it is the perfect place, and we're hoping that this will be the start of a very great partnership, working with City, Parks and Rec, and Cory and his team to get kids outside more. And we wanted to start with the preschool, because there's such a great need for early education in the city right now. And once we get that established, we would like to work with all of our public schools to get kids outside in parks all over the area. So thank you very much for considering our ideas and our projects. It's been a long time coming, so we're very excited that we're, we finally made it to this day. So thank you very much.
Anya, could you at some point give us other information? We're excited about your ideas. If you have anything in writing or can make a presentation, we'd love to hear more in the future.
Great, we would love to do that. Thanks.
Thanks so much. And that's it.
You can turn that to my agent.
Good evening, councilmembers and citizens of Port Angeles. And I'm here as part of the Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce and a downtown merchant. You can catch your look on ice skating in Port Angeles. This has been an idea that we've kicked around in a chamber committee for about four years, and some of us decided this year that we would either continue to kick it around or we would make it a reality. And I'm going to have packets for all of you, but I'll go through some of the stuff. The staff has been wonderful. Lodging tax has been wonderful. You stepped up, went ahead, got us some seed money to begin the whole project. It will be on Front Street, east of what used to be Jack's Tavern, Cap House 51 maybe. It's all volunteer people of Port Angeles. We have, we're about a third of our way to the $180,000 that we need. We're doing it $10 at a time. We get those mailed in. For $100 donation, you get two free skates. Bill Blair, I want to see you down there skating. And we have, you know, we have the skates rented. Your skate rental would be $15. We're working with the grade schools so that the preschools and all of them can buy a $5 ticket for children to come down and skate. We'll be open basically 9 to 10 in the morning, seven days a week. All volunteer staff, all volunteer people, all people of the community of Port Angeles. So we are doing lots of things here, and I'd love to have you come and volunteer.
I just might do that.
Thank you. So, you know, don't mess with me. So the visual concept, so, and it's getting, the concept's getting bigger and better. The group is out of California. It's called Ice America. You can go online and look it up. It's going to be called Port Angeles Wonder Village. If you want to volunteer, every Monday at 11 o'clock, we meet right over there and figure out. We're doing a lot of things that we don't know how to do, but we're investigating and learning down the road. We haven't had ice skating in Port Angeles since Lake Dawn, and some of you don't even know that we used to ice skate at Lake Dawn. It's going to be an exciting time. You're going to drive down Front Street in Port Angeles, and it's going to look to the water side for you to your right side. It's going to look like Seven Cedars Casino, because we're going to have those kinds of lights and those kinds of trees and that kind of a village, and you're going to love it. And I invite all of you to come and volunteer with us. Give me a dollar, I don't care. We need money and we need volunteers, and I'm really not even very shy about saying that, when my timer just went off, right?
Thank you.
So I'm going to, I have packets, I have brochures, but councilor, you all get a packet which tells everything about what we've done.
And tell your employers to book their Christmas parties there, right? Tell your employers to book their Christmas parties.
Oh, yes, you can have your Christmas party there. You can have birthday parties there. You can volunteer. Give me money.
I already did.
I know, you already did.
Bob Freeland, 520 East 10th Street, Port Angeles. I'm back to remind the staff and council members that you signed a resolution to develop a climate action plan in 2019. And that appeared in the P D N on June 25th. So you're stuck. The Olympic Climate Action Group is looking forward to assisting staff and council members, other citizens, institutions, businesses, in developing that plan, and maybe even a college class in a college or university in San Diego area, if Mayor Brook ever remembers to bring that card to me. Now, I brought a contingency in case she forgot, a Sharpie, permanent marker, to write on her forehead. Much proof, one swat proof. I'll have to write it backwards. Let's see, can I do that? B R I N G C A R D 4 O R B O B. So if I don't get to write that on there, I may conspire with your husband to write it on your forehead when you're asleep. And I will remember to get you that card. So, yes, so we did promise to do that, and it's on our schedule to begin in January, as I understand from staff. So we are going to be working on that climate action plan. So thank you for the reminder, and I will get you that card. Next person on the list, we've got Holland Bailey.
So do I have to say my?
Say your name and let you know whether you live in the city or not.
Okay, my name is Holland Bailey, and I am a resident of Port Angeles. So I am a senior at Port Angeles High School, and I recognize many of your faces from your visits to our classes. There's just one thing, well, we really appreciate, okay, Holland. So I'd like to thank you all for your work in the community and your dedication for our growth and development. And some of you have previously made visits. We appreciate this at high school, but we think that, or I think that having a student position, or student positions on the city council as a representative or liaison will be more efficient in linking the high school to the city, because ultimately the students have Port Angeles High School for the future of the city. And I understand that it's slightly unnecessary speaking at the city council meeting. I could speak to one of the members up there or individually, but considering that they would be among you as one of your peers, I figured it'd be best to speak to all of you at once. Last week, I extended that squirm city council meeting, where they had one student representative, one was absent. At the meeting, they gave a report on the goings of their high school, the things that are going on. But not only that, they took what the topics and issues that were discussed at the meeting back to their school and discussed them at their city council meeting. No, their student council meeting, they were talking about the city council. I think that's a great way of linking the two together. This wouldn't just be Port Angeles High School. I'm also going to reach out to Lincoln High School, just as Port Angeles School District Board of Education does. They have one representative from Port Angeles High School and Lincoln High School. So linking both schools together, I think would be best. That is all. Thank you for your time, and if there are any questions or concerns, I'll be happy to answer them whenever.
So thank you so much for bringing that up. And here's the lady you'll be working with, because I know she's going to give us some good information, both from the high school and from the college. And we will be discussing it at our next agenda.
Thank you.
So thanks. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to the city council on any item whatsoever?
John Rolston, city resident. One, I want to praise the city for, at the end of most of their correspondence now, in fact, I should say all of their correspondence, where they've got the notice out about disclosure, this may be subject to disclosure, Public Records Act, R C W, Chapter 42.56. Go ahead and correspond with some of your legislatures, legislators. They don't even have that. Now, I don't know if they think that the law should be changed or they are different from being subject to that, but I want to bring it up and be on the public record that they should be subject to the same rules as you guys. Secondly, I wanted to thank the planning department, I guess, community and economic development team for processing a short request of mine in a very, very timely fashion. So thank you.
If there's anybody else who would like to speak up, please go to the mic.
My name is Jeffrey Galley. I'm at P O Box 971, and I live in the city. At this time, I'll let you know, city council and mayor, that for Papa TV, I took over as president of October 8, 2018. We are talking about restructuring right now at this time, and the project that we had talked about was the games, which we had said we would check into with the city council. At this time, that was run by Patrick, our former president. I'm trying to work with him to get him to get his people to go ahead and still film games, and he's able to use our equipment and still be able to put it on Papa TV. We have no problem with that, but I'm learning more as I go with him, because I didn't know what he did before this. So got to give me a little bit of time to figure out what's what with all the stuff he does. But I'm taking care of what we need to take care of and to be out there for the community, and I want to thank you again for having us and being able to represent the city council and the mayor. Thank you again. position, or student positions on the city council as a representative or liaison would be more efficient in linking the high school to the city, because ultimately, the students at Port Angeles High School are the future of the city. And I understand that it is slightly unnecessary, speaking at the city council meeting, I could speak to one of the members up there or individually, but considering that they would be among you as one of your peers, I figured it'd be best to speak to all of you at once. Last week, I extended that squirm city council meeting, where they had one student representative, one was absent. At the meeting, they gave a report on the goings of their high school, the things that are going on, but not only that, they took what the topics and issues that were discussed at the meeting back to their school and discussed them at their city council meeting, no, their student council meeting, they were talking about the city council. I think that's a great way linking the two together. This wouldn't just be Port Angeles High School, I'm also going to reach out to Lincoln High School, just as Port Angeles School District's Board of Education does. They have one representative from Port Angeles High School and Lincoln High School, so linking both schools together, I think would be best. That is all. Thank you for your time, and if there are any questions or concerns, I'll be happy to answer them whenever.
So, thank you so much for bringing that up, and here's the lady you'll be working with, because I know she's going to give us some good information, both from the high school and from the college, and we will be discussing it at our next agenda.
Thank you.
So, thanks. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to the city council on any item whatsoever?
John Rolson, city resident. One, I want to praise the city for, at the end of most of their correspondence now, in fact, I should say all of their correspondence, where they've got the notice out about disclosure, this may be subject to disclosure, Public Records Act, RCW, Chapter 42.56. Go ahead and correspond with some of your legislatures, legislators, they don't even have that. Now, I don't know if they think that the law should be changed, or they are different from being subject to that, but I want to bring it up and be on the public record that they should be subject to the same rules as you guys. Secondly, I wanted to thank the planning department, I guess, the community and economic development team for processing a short request of mine in a very, very timely fashion. So, thank you.
If there's anybody else who would like to speak up, please go to the mic.
My name is Jeffrey Galley, I'm at P.O.B.O.S. 971, and I live in the city. At this time, I'll let you know, city council and mayor, that for Papa TV, I took over as president of October 8th, 2018. We are talking about restructuring right now at this time, and the project that we had talked about was games, which we had said we would check into, where the city council. At this time, that was run by Patrick, our former president. I'm trying to work with him to get him to get his people to go ahead and still film games, and he's able to use our equipment and still be able to put it on Papa TV. We have no problem with that, but I'm learning more as I go with him, because I didn't know what he did before this, so, got to give me a little bit of time to figure out what's what with all the stuff he does, so. But I'm taking care of what we need to take care of, and to be out there for the community, and I want to thank you again for having us and being able to represent the city council and the mayor. Thank you again.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the city council?
Can I ask a question?
Not really, not right now, but afterwards, we, you know. Anybody else?
I just, I thought you can ask the question, but we won't give you an answer.
Actually, it's not for you, it's for the young lady that has the skating rink. Young lady?
Yeah, well, why?
It's not very wide, my brain.
All right, so, we'll move on. Are there any late items?
I do have a late item. So, I'd like to add a resolution to authorize filing a security brief, it couldn't be Seattle, but I can explain that one.
So, we put that under other consideration?
Point of order, since we have never seen this before, it should not be added to the current agenda. This is absolutely new to the council, and last-minute items are not added to the agenda.
Right, but I'm thinking if it can be added, just for the discussion sake, and then we can vote on it next time.
If we don't make a decision on it tonight, it's irrelevant, it has to be filed tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's a reason for last-minute items. So, I mean, otherwise, it wouldn't have to be a last-minute item.
It's not appropriate to throw something at, as the last minute, it's absolutely against everything that.
Do you have a rule of procedure for that, council member, Tim?
So, so taking that into consideration, the fact that if we don't move on forward, we will add it to other considerations as number two, and that is? All right, any other late items from staff?
Madam Mayor, I would like us to recognize who's sitting in the director of public works seat this evening.
Yes.
We have James Burke, who has been employed in Port Angeles for many years. The only mistake he's made that I'm ever aware of was moving out of Port Angeles temporarily, realizing, realizing the mistake, quickly returning home. But I have to tell you that as mayor, I was head of the Cesspool Centennial Celebration, year-long celebration, our 150th anniversary of Port Angeles. James' son was the first baby born that year, received big press in the newspaper, although he wasn't old enough to read it, and a lot of prizes, but he's not allowed to move out of town, he has a Cesspool Centennial baby, so we're happy he's here.
Welcome home. All right, so, we'll take the more late items, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there, and I guess, Cory, would you like to give two sentences on the facility use for Angeles Nature School?
Sure. So, this is a project that I'm at, approached the city about, about three years ago, and it was just something she was very passionate about, and nature schools are very popular, and we, the city, is Seattle's partner with multiple agencies, and they have eleven facilities to be, and eleven different places for nature schools. So, this is something that we researched, we took it to the park's commission, and paid up, this is something that was a much-needed type of activity in our community, and so we're trying to get to the place where we can bring that to Port Angeles.
Thank you, thank you for that. And that is our consent agenda.
May I add a little bit of that? If you don't mind, I'd like to add a little bit more perspective to that. I'm on the board of directors of the North Pacific History Center, formerly the Collin County Historical Society. What specifically the young lady and Cory are talking about, in Lincoln Park, there are these old buildings that were put there by Sandy Key years ago. One of them is the old Lincoln School, and the, it was proposed at our board of directors meeting on Friday, that we worked with that young lady to have that nature school in that old Lincoln School building, and Cory, we're going to work with the Parks and Rec to see if we can move that building maybe onto our campus at the Lincoln School, where it may, she may be able to use it there, but the history center is already working with the young lady on that, and those buildings, if you haven't seen them, are in Lincoln Park, and they represent, was there four of them?
There was, there is four, there used to be five, and we're getting to a point where we need to do something with them, and I reached out to Sandy to see if he wanted it back, because it originally is, and he has accepted to take two back, and working with the Lincoln School and a third, and we have a possible place for the fourth.
Anyway, just a little perspective.
Thank you. Anybody else with that consent agenda? Okay, so, we're going to review the consent agenda, expanding your report from September 22nd to October 5th, 2018, in the amount of $2,598,913.52, and the facility use agreement for Angeles Nature School.
I move the consent agenda as read?
Second. All right, we got a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, we say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As you know, this one, thank you. So, we are at the public hearing, the proposal of amendment for 2019 utility rates, and this will be the first reading.
Madam Mayor, council, we do have the first reading of utility rates for 2019. I'm very happy to report that we only have need to raise rates in two specific utilities. It's very important that council know that we went through in great detail all of the utility budgets for 2019, and did our very best to ensure that no increases or limited increases were provided or necessary moving forward with the community. I think we did that with great respect for the fact that it is very challenging for our community members to be able to oftentimes make ends meet and pay their utilities, and I think it's extremely important that we be aware of every expense that we have has an impact on those future rates, and I just want council to know that we took great care in looking through those utility-based budgets. Tonight, we do have Tess and Glenn available to answer additional questions, and we're extremely appreciative to the hard work of the finance department to actually look at the cost of service assessment, to really determine what the need is for utilities moving forward. So, when that will turn over to Glenn, who'll provide a re-presentation. Madam Mayor, while he is setting up, I do want to reiterate, I don't see that we outlined it in the staff report, but there was a favorable recommendation from the utility advisory committee on this item.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and to meet with you as a city council, and I appreciate the chance to talk about rates and provide what I feel is mostly good news, if not totally good news. I'd like to thank, before I get started, the Public Works and the Civil Operations Group in helping put together the cost of service analysis and the budget. I think that the budget is, will be presented as, is very solid and very firm. I would like to mention that part of my responsibility in preparing the COSA's will be shifted to Mary Sue French, so in the future, she'll get a chance to stand up here and address here, and I know you all know her, and so, I'm excited to have that happen. I'd like to request, before we get started, that as we discuss these items today, that if you have any questions, it would make it much simpler if we kind of waited until the end and then addressed them all at the same time. If you really can't control yourself and have to ask something, then I'll forgive you, but I'd really prefer that we go that approach. I think you'll find that some of the presentation that we make tonight will answer a lot of those questions that you already have in mind, at least that's the intent. So, let's get started. I wanted today to present the end at the beginning, and then we'll present the end at the end also. This is a comparison of 2018 and 2019 utility bill for a standard residential customer. You can see that we have chosen to use, in this example, a 13-kilowatt-hour consumption rate for electricity and 450 cubic feet for water. You can see ultimately that the increase between 2018 and 2019 will be approximately $2.75 per month, or less than a 1% increase. And that's for the residential utility bill. And please keep in mind, of course, that there are two other utilities that are not in your residential bill, and they are the stormwater and the solid waste transfer station. The intention in 2019 is to also maintain the 2018 rates for those utilities. The second presentation is a standard commercial customer, and I picked a consumption rate of 5,000 kilowatt-hours and water consumption of 2,000 cubic feet, just so that we can be looking at the comparison, 2018 to 2019, and you'll see that in the bottom line down here, the difference is going to be about 98 cents per month, or about a 0.12% increase between the two. And the difference between those two is the fact that we have, and will show it more in the presentation, the necessity of increasing some residential rates for water, which is not necessary and required for the commercial businesses. And I'll explain that in detail, so you'll understand why we're doing that. Wanted to cover the factors that went into setting the rates and determining the cost of service analysis in 2019, for 2019. Once again, as part of the process, we're balancing to the 2019 budget, making sure that we're linking the two, so that if rates are higher than the budget, than they are on the COSA, that would not make sense. The rates in the, in the cost of service analysis and the rates that we propose have to support the budget in total. Once again, has been mentioned already, reflection of the cost containment emphasis placed by the city, also the maintenance of capital assets, refunding, part of the rates that we are proposing are required because we have future and current capital projects that need to be completed. Some of them can be pre-funded, as in, we set aside money from previous rates to fund the capital in some cases, in some cases, in 2019, we'll be funding current year and future year capital requirements. We'll also maintain the required fund levels for both bond and those that are part of our policy of keeping the fund levels at the prescribed rate. Rates are being proposed for 2019 only. COSA rate analysis was completed in 2018 on all utilities with the exception of the electric utility, and we're presently in the process of designing and building that cost of service analysis model, working with Shuishi and Greg to bring them together, and that should be completed before too long. The request that was made by the city manager was to build 2019 one-year rates only, and then, early in 2019, establish a time to sit down and review the COSA preparation, the principles, the assumptions, and the results with you, so that you can understand how the numbers come together, also, we can take your feedback and direction and things that you would like to see happen in those areas that we can consider. And then, based on that period of time, we will sit down and get a understanding as well of the movement forward. Once a rate structure and a rate design is put together, then it can be used as input for not just 2020, but also it can be used to maybe consider multiple-year rate setting as, once the structure is designed and in place. As was mentioned, with the exception of water and wastewater, all revenue requirements can be covered with 2018 rates continuation. Wanted to go over the 2019 budget numbers, because they are the items that determine the rates and how they're put together. First of all, as you look at this chart, if you look at the yellow ones, such as electric, stormwater, and so forth, those are the ones where we're going to continue to use 2018 rates, you will automatically see, because of that, at the bottom of the sheet, there will be a fund increase. If those rates did not meet the fund requirements, then we would be setting higher rates, but they do, and they give us a little bit of a cushion, a fund reserve for fund increase. The net fund increase in total for all utilities is a 1%, so it's not a big number, but each one of them has a significance. Specifically, I'd like to mention the fact that the transport station numbers are there because there's a lot of unknowns. We've got recycling that's up in the air, and how that's going to play out, and what the costs are going to be related to that, and other factors that kind of require that we set aside some funds to take a look at that. I'm extremely excited, and I know that probably getting excited over the numbers, I would forego it to a lot of you, but I'm really excited to see in solid base collections that we have a fund increase by using the 2018 rates. This is the one utility that has, over the past several years, had a fund depletion. We've been pulling down the fund a little bit. This is the first chance in probably four or five years, we can actually show an increase in fund to replace some of that that's been depleted, and so, I'm really excited about that. I wanted to take a minute and talk a little bit about the fact that we do have a lot of rates that are not going up, and the logical assumption in the past has always been, make increases every year, and I wanted to talk a little bit about how the rates are determined and what the factors involved are. If you look at this chart, you can see that there's expenses. The expenses are going to include everything from labor utility, purchase power, all of those type of things, and you would naturally assume on a year-to-year basis, because of inflation, and because of cost of living increases, and in the case of maybe the benefit package, you know, the medical costs continue to increase, and so, in theory, those costs are going to increase year over year. Automatically assuming 2% to 3% within that range is an increase. However, I do need to commend the city and the utility group for the fact that they have taken a large step forward in cost containment measures, making sure that we don't have to increase, making sure that efficiencies are taken care of and that things are in place, so that there's not that 2% to 3% increase in that category. The next three categories, bond, principal, interest, and debt service, are actually costs that are going down, so they're decreasing as these expenditures, other expenditures maybe increase a little bit. With bond, principal, interest, and debt service, as debt is paid off, and I as debt is paid off, and it is every month and every year, oftentimes a debt instrument may drop. In other words, we paid it off. And therefore, the requirement for debt service is going to disappear. Also, with a lot of our instruments in debt service, there's a factor that actually shows decreasing payments, if you will, over the years. And so, just to give you an example, kind of where this is at, in 2017, at the end of 2017 year, the debt service related to these specific utilities was $30 million. By 2025, the debt service related to these utilities will be $11,785,000. So you can see, just in a few years, there's a decrease in the debt and with that, the debt service requirements. So if you're going to see an ability to not need to increase rates, one of the factors is the fact that that debt service is changing. Capital will either be larger or smaller based on future capital requirements. This year, for example, we saw capital requirements, the need for the transfers decreased by about $199,000, which is one of the reasons that we're not required to increase the rates because of that. So there's more than just the factors we normally think about that we have to cover with the rate-setting process. And I think in all cases where the city is doing a great job of trying to maintain the lowest rates possible within the environment that we have to deal with. Quickly, on the four utilities that are not increasing. Electric utility, it has zero rate increase for 2018. We also had a zero rate increase for 2018. We use AMI funds, which is automated meter infrastructure funds. The settlement we had with them several years ago. And we continue to use those. This is the second year of five that we will have those available for use as a rate reduction requirement. Capital transfers includes $190,000. There's $250,000 in there for the light office building. Stormwater utility, zero increase for 2019. Capital transfers of $404,000. Solid waste transfer station, zero rate increase. Understand that this comes on the heels of a 2018 large rate decrease we had at the transfer station. And so I think it's notable that we're able to continue to maintain those rates. Solid waste collections, once again, directly increase some capital transfers to deal with street maintenance and governmental capital. So let's move to water rates. I know it was announced that there was a 5.4% increase in water rates. It really is a 3.8% increase in water rates overall. We, however, have decided, based on some numbers in the chart, I'll show you in just a second, about the necessity of increasing residential rates, 5.4%, which gives us the same number as a 3.8% if we leave the rest of the commercial, municipal, and irrigation rates alone and hold them constant.
I'm sorry, can you explain that again?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Are household utility bills, household, going to increase by 5.4% in the water rates?
In the water rates, yes.
So how does that play the 3.8% rate?
Overall, that increase funds that we needed, which was $227,000 and some change, which is what our revenues were short of our costs, you could split it a 3.8% across all customers. In choosing to limit the increase strictly to the residential rates, that turns it into a 5.4% and 0% then for the rest of them. I just want to go right to the next slide. I think it maybe shows a little clearer. If you look on the 2019 budget, you can see that the residential rates are shown with a 5.4%. The commercial municipal rates are zero. The irrigation rates are zero. The average, if it was averaged over everyone, is a 3.8%. Is that, that's it? Once again, we're in the second year of rate reduction. We leave with the AMI transfer funds. Capital projects are still robust. Industrial water rates do not impact these rates. And we're still in the process of putting together the COSA and the 2019 budget for the industrial water, for the ALWAT facility. I think we were waiting for James to return to do that. So let's go back to this slide. Let's talk about why we chose to increase the water rates and not the other rates. That's a big, important factor. If you look back at the history of what's gone on in the water utility and the rate setting, first of all, the water treatment plant was put in place in 2010. In 2014, consultants were hired to repair a COSA model to be used to determine the rates that would be used for the future. A consultant came in, did that, and made a recommendation and left a model to be used. That model was used for 2015, 16, and 17. During that three-year period, residential rates went up 9.2%. Commercial and municipal went up 24.2%. And irrigation went up 42%. And there's a reason why that is. And their model showed things that, to them, probably made sense, but to the city of Port Angeles did not make any sense. So in 2017, when we really got down to analyzing the model and we began to question validity of it, we made a determination in 2018 rates to try to fix irrigation. And you can see that we reduced irrigation rates last year by 15%. And we then spread the rest of the increase over the rest of the utilities, the residential, commercial, municipal. And let me, first of all, explain. I know somebody's going to be wanting to know these percentages. The yellow ones are the percentage increase from 2014. If you see a non-yellow percent change, that's the percent change from the previous year. So they compare what decisions we made there. So if you look at the four-year change, which is where we're at, and after making the 2018 fix that we did, it still shows a 10.1% increase over four years for the residential, which is about a 2.5% increase. We see a 25% increase for the commercial municipal still. And we see now a more reasonable rate and percent increase for irrigation. As we looked at the COSA model in 2018 and we looked at the results of what we had done to try to fix things in 2018 and looked at the numbers here, the 10%, the 25%, the 20%, it became fairly obvious, in order to move forward with using a rate, COSA-generated rate structure, we needed, first of all, narrow the gap. So we said, let's change the residential rates and increase it 5.4%. Bring in them up to 16% over five years, which is still only a 3.2% increase. And let's not change the commercial municipal irrigation because if we do, we're probably going to have to turn right around and reduce that the next year as we truly get the water rate customers in the proper balance of where they need to be. Now, in 2019, as we go through the process of looking at the COSA model and looking at assumptions and how things are put together, I'm not sure that we will end up with 23, 23, and 23. It's probably still going to be somewhat skewed towards the residential as we go through that process. But at the same point in time, the starting point that we had before we made the 2019 numbers was not, was not, not really fair. So that's why the decision was made, or the proposal was made, I guess it's not a decision until you make your decision, but the proposal was made to change the residential rates and increase them in 2019. Keep in mind that, in the context of 2019 in total, all utilities is still less than a 1% increase overall. So this 5.4 is built into the numbers we looked at before on the utility bills. So that's kind of the history of why we are making the recommendation we are. We feel like it provides a fix of sorts for the utilities, for the residential. It allows us to be moving forward with a more evenly balanced rate increase over the past five years. Now, I could, should also point out, of course, 2018, 2019 is when we used the rate stabilization funds with AMI. And so that brought the whole rates down. Someone's probably going to ask, what did this consultant back here think and what did they do? I could tell you, it could take longer than we have time to do now, but there were some logical errors. And briefly, the biggest logic error we set is we want to deal with a peak demand factor, which says, when rates are at their peak, who is responsible for that peak? Well, the rates are going to be at their peak in the summertime. The usage is going to be at peak in the summertime. Therefore, they assigned a two-and-a-quarter factor to costs related to the irrigation. Because as a percentage, there's a huge portion of that peak. And the peak should bear more costs than... That works so well with electrical utility, where you're buying tiered electric based on peak demand and everything else. It doesn't work when you're getting water out of the rainwell and doesn't cost anything as far as purchase price goes. So that was one of their logic factors that did not make any sense. And there's some others that would be questionable. Let's talk wastewater. Wastewater, once again, and we'll show you on the next chart, but the overall increase is .37%, although the operational rate increase is .5%, a half a percent. The CSO rate increase is zero. The CSO rate is there to take care of debt service related to the CSO project. That's not increasing. So therefore, pretty much you should see the CSO always be at a 0% or close to it. So it kind of, you know, to the rate pair, it shows that they make pay 0.5% increase, but really, when combined with the two, they're only paying 0.37%. Revenue match expenditures and some capital projects that were put in place. Here you can see the history from 2015 forward. If you look on the far end of the budget, here's where you can definitely see if the base rate for a customer is $56.83, that is a 0.5% increase from 56.55. But with no increase here, you're seeing the overall rate increase is .4 or .37, as we used to show on the previous page. The wastewater, as you can see, there's, within the residential, there are large base per month numbers and no consumption numbers. So just to answer one of the questions that could be asked, if you look down here, the base on commercial is only 1947, but you have a consumption factor built into it down here. And as part of the early 2019, we need to look at that configuration and determine if that's the right way to continue because, you know, there's the pluses and minuses to that. But definitely we need to consider other options. So, back to where we started. This is the residential customer and the change in their potential bill monthly. And then, of course, this is the commercial customer. So you can see, of course, in the water, commercial does not have anything who has the bulk of the increase. Or residential is within the water category. Still, however, showing a less than 1% increase overall in utility rates, which is, I think, remarkable given the situation that we're facing. So, now here's where I get to the end. Take all those questions you've been stalling up that kind of fight you can answer. And I can go back any slide if you don't mind. Any questions?
So, when we talked about rate stabilization funds for the AMI settlement, my initial question was kind of, you know, are we setting ourselves up for a basic presentary that will go away? But looking at the numbers, it kind of looks like they're not insignificant, but a small enough percentage that that may not be the case.
They are smaller, and there's also other rate stabilization funds that could be used in the future. Once again, depending upon, do we lose a bond? Do we rub a bond somewhere in there and maybe we'll need to use them? So in other words, there's other options there to help rate stabilize the future besides just the AMI funds.
Anybody else? So I've got a question for you. Which is, this is one of the things that I know has been brought up often. And so if you go back to your slide for your water utility rates, one of the things that I can see that you're trying to change this based on the increase, so you're trying to even out the increase for those. But the part that never worked for me was if you look at the rate for one, you know, gallon of, you know, cubic foot of water, the residential customer is paying .0254, while the commercial customer is paying .0230. So the rate itself, and I do know that the base, we talked in the past as to getting rid of that base rate. So if we had no base rates, you're just looking at consumption alone, then at this point still, the residential customer is paying more. And then, the... So the idea was that we were trying not to have any area subsidize any other area in general. any other area in general. So the idea was that, ideally, was to move everybody having the same rate, rather than having the, the same increase. Because, and that's one of the biggest reasons why, if you look at the, the deal with the irrigation, if you look at the rate that they used to have, .019, and then they went up to try to at least get into, you know, equal numbers as to what the residential customer was paying. So, that was the idea, trying to stabilize or equalize the rate, so that one gallon, one glass of water should cost the same thing for a residential customer as it should cost for a commercial one. You know, versus the, like you said, water doesn't cost us, it's the commands. And I do understand that the commands is different for irrigation versus commercial and residential, but things like water issue. So, one, one of the things that I'd like to see, and I don't know if we have time to kind of take another look at this, is trying to get rid of that, having a base. You know, when people are not here, should they be paying for just a regular base amount, whether they turn the water on or not? And I know that, in the past, we've had these conversations as to, well, yes, it costs us to just be able to have the option to turn the water on or off. But, as, it, it was to cover some of the potential issues that might come up as a safety, as an insurance. And I'm wondering if that's just not as useful.
Madam Mayor, if I may interject, I will say that the, the base conversation is a really important one. I do think it's important that that be part of the broader conversation that occurs in the spring. I think the goal was to get some rates put in place for 2019, recognizing that as you shift the cost and base in any way, it has pretty substantial impacts across the board. And we really need to think through those impacts carefully. And, and so we will get to that conversation, but I think the goal is to get some 19 rates in place first.
And, let me also point out, if we could, if you look at the base rate of residential versus the base rate of commercial, that is a lot different. And so if you combine those two, truly, even with the higher usage rate here, the residential is paying less, in most cases. Not just on their usage, I mean if they're...
Right, that actually comes upon the usage.
But in the average customer, yeah, they're paying less.
And so, if, you know, if it comes to that point where we end up, as I said, it should, I feel like it should be fair to all of us, you know, that we don't subsidize necessarily one for another. That we should all pay, you know, what we're using. And I do know, like I said, it was an issue of risk, you know, and balancing and month-to-month, the whole thing. But, because in the summers, we all use water. You know, we're watering our garden, and, you know, and still, to this day, I still get complaints, why is my wastewater going out when I'm just watering my garden? And I know it's a small amount, but that's still a complaint that's perpetual. But again, I'd like to make sure that if we get to the future and whether this becomes the conversation that we started in the spring, as to, you know, one glass of water for residential and commercial, it should, you know, it should cost us the same amount.
Yeah, to make you feel better, the COSA says the same thing. So when you get to actually looking at the COSA, we'll be looking at the fact that the usage rates probably should be the same.
And I, I know it might be a shock at the beginning, if we go without a base rate, because your glass of water will be more expensive, but then you don't have a base rate. So we can use less than your, actually, I think it's an equity issue as well, to get rid of the base.
Yeah, and one other thing to strike, say, is, you know, we're, I think, sorry. Did you want to say?
Yes.
I think I had to land something first.
Go ahead.
I would like to just make a comment towards the base rate. From an accounting standpoint, to have no base rate would make the, the revenue so unpredictable that it would be, we would be all over the place when it came to year-by-year rate increases. And so, the, not only the philosophy that everybody, we have a conveyor system that we have to pay for, and everybody pays for it at a certain rate, but the fact of the matter, from an accounting standpoint, the base rate stabilizes a revenue source and makes this type of work more predictable. And so, you know, we can, we can take her with that number if you wish, but on the other hand, to eliminate the base rate would be a mistake, in my opinion, from both the accounting standpoint and the reporting standpoint, and would make, make everything a lot more unpredictable.
Sir, I appreciate that.
And I can agree with you, but that's just me, yes.
So, you know, one of the things I appreciate, the work that's gone into this, you know, that we're able to bring rates that are not substantially different from last year. A lot of our citizens are really hoping for a lower rate, it's not just, like, the higher rates. So, with that in mind, you know, when I see a little side of higher rates for residential consumption, the thing that comes to my mind is conservation. And so what I want to see, you know, in that conversation during the spring is, how do we create rates that will give the most value to the citizens that take those conservation methods at hand? So that's another kind of part of that conversation.
Appreciate that, yeah, it definitely is. Because as you determine base versus consumption, all of those things come into play.
One of the really fun things about this is, what do we mean by fair rates? So do we mean equitable, do we mean equal? Does somebody who lives, do people living in RS-11 zones, where the lots are wider and therefore the pipes that the city maintains are longer to individual users, should they pay a higher rate? I mean, there's all sorts of questions we could ask about how to slice this. And so the word "fair" is not just a neutral word here. It's, it has a lot of ways that we can do it and call it fair. So I look forward to this being extended discussion in the spring. And I appreciate the work that's gone into the COSA so far for this next year.
Good, thank you.
Can I have one more question? Do you have a question? Or? Sure, you have? No. Right, so, let's open this for the public hearing. So, anybody in the audience? Anywhere in this person? So, in accordance with the City of Port Angeles, Washington, and then in sections of chapter 13.12, electric rates, 13.44; water rates, 13.54; solid waste rates, and 13.65; wastewater rates of the Port Angeles municipal. So with that, if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this, please go to the podium. Tell us, state your name, and whether you live in the city or not.
Ms. Smith, Port Angeles. The only real issue I have is that we do have a high population of 20% poverty level, and we have, what, somewhere like 40% retired or fixed income. And if I'm a business, I can pass that along, I can raise my rates. I can pass that along in my product. If I'm a, if I'm using irrigation, I can pass that along in the per-pound rate of what I'm selling. But as a fixed-income citizen in Port Angeles, what do we do? And that's my concern here. It's like, yeah, it looks more fair the other way, however, you're dealing with fixed income and not fixed income that can be passed on. So what is the impact on individual customers? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak on this?
Hello, my name's Charlie Crane, I've lived in Port Angeles seven years now, or 3360 would be. Thanks for the nice job on the manes and valves. We're still a little low on some pressure. A little bird did tell me that the chlorine level was increased 100% from Seattle's 2.1 or 3 to 5.2 or something like that. That's, that's more chlorine than I need to, from anything. And as soon as you correct that, I think we'd all appreciate it. So, where that comes from, and whatever else they're putting in the water, you know, we've been through the ups and downs of the fluoride issue, but... And as far as the water, you know, I'm grateful that I can afford to pay my utilities for all that's included, for all it takes to take care of these things that everybody needs. But I would love to see the rates on the water come down. And the little bug that I can't get rid of with that is the, I pay for water coming past my flow meter, but I'm getting double the, I'm paying for rainwater going down the, down the storm, the stormwater process. But somebody's probably got an answer for that. I love being able to have an open discussion here, and I won't take up much more of your time. But I would like to see these taxes come down. And there's nothing, the water issue's okay, but, yeah, I, I just got gouged on a deal, and I won't go into that. It run my finances for the year, long story short. Both of my folks passed in 2014, I had a senior discount. They only audit it four years, so instead of sending me a two-cent piece of paper saying, "Look at your finances," because I inherited some dividends, and it was nice money. And I, I missed it, it was, I was looking at that and not the difference in my income for my senior discount. So four years later, I had to borrow thousands of dollars from Roger, unsecured loans, start my life for a month and a half, and pay over $7,000 in taxes. I'm paying $200 a month to live in my property. And it was increased $14,000 since last year. I only paid $89,000 for this tremendous property. I mean, it's something God did, I really got blessed in this house. And I, and I, I mean, oh, I'm past here, I'm sorry. So, work together and spend money on what really needs to be spent. And there's so much verification you can do on the minutes. People aren't going to come unless they have a purpose. And to live here, they have to have an affordable tax rate. It's really hurting me. Thank you, and God bless every good thing else. That's where I give credit to the goodness done.
Thank you. And I know that James could probably chime in a little bit on the fact that you don't get charged for wastewater from the rainwater coming in. And also, I don't know if at some point you can speak about the chlorine levels, but that's...
Yeah, the chlorine levels should be used the same throughout the city. The residual should use here and there. The treatment plant would be, would be the highest at the chicken point. Two out, two back, well, the first point of the treatment plant. Up on would be, there could have been high residual up there just because of the dissection of the pipe. But besides that, it should be the same. I feel we need to be taught afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
When things like that happen, then I'd go to the paper, which might everybody picks or something, you know, in your news. You know, we're doing this for now, just so you know you're not close and you're paying more than a damn...
You know, communication is definitely important. In many parts of the corner, you know, you know, there's a certain process to determine the health, in many parts, it's dissection of that pipe, so it's for safety purposes. But we've got afterwards also, in terms of looking...
My name's Steve Hopkins, representing myself as a private citizen of the City of Port Angeles. I have a very low water usage rate, I use about 120 cubic feet per month. And so the base rate does make up about 90 to 95% of my monthly bill every month when it comes to water usage. And so I do my best to reduce my water usage, however, if I cut my usage by 20%, I only save about 50 cents and over a $40 bill. And so, and I'm pleased to hear that there is going to be some discussion about the base rate, because for those of us that live alone, not just young people living alone, but of course our seniors who are either living alone, that base rate does play a big role in their water bill. So thanks for speaking on.
Anybody else who would like to address the council on the utility rates? All right, seeing now that we're, we're going to continue this, and this will be continued until November 6th. All right, next, we've got a public hearing on the 2019 budget revenue use issues.
Madam Mayor, I'm very pleased to present to council tonight the revenue sources for 2019. Serena Karadova from the Finance Department will be making a presentation on revenue sources. You can, you will see that there's quite a bit of positive news relative to revenues for 2019. And ultimately, this is the first step in the budget process. We're extremely grateful to the Finance Department and other department heads for the very diligent work that they put in to ensure that we came out with a balanced budget for 2019. And I'm happy to have presented that to council last week. And we still have one more copy to get out in hard copy to Deputy Mayor Dexter. But other than that, we will hope that council has an opportunity to dig into the document and really look at it closely, and then we will have another work session on budget next week. So I'll turn it over to Serena.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, we do have the presentation for the 2019 revenue sources. This is the first in a line of budget presentations and work sessions and documents that we're receiving. So we are going to be covering total revenue and going through each fund type and type of model revenues that are in those as well. And we'll have time for some questions on, as public hearing, shortly thereafter. Just to get started, I wanted to talk about what the revenue sources presentation is. It is a requirement for RCW 8455-120. And basically, what it says is, we must hold revenue sources presentation followed by public hearing for the coming year's budget, and within that, we must include any consideration for property tax increases. It's important to note that there's no action associated with this other than public hearing, and it is a one-time presentation, it will become a fact to council. But there will be other opportunities to discuss revenues as we go through the budget process. Also, in the requirements for, for the budget, I just wanted to include that we do have a requirement to produce the preliminary budget to council and to our citizens, and we did meet that goal. We have until the 31st of October, and those documents were printed for council and posted to the website, and it's delivered to the library on the 12th of last Friday. Looking at the total revenue for all funds, this is just an overall picture. And we're going to talk about each fund, more specifically, since I've spent a lot of time on this. But we are expecting our total revenue to increase $1,755,000 from last year to this year. Some of that is increases in taxes, not just in general funds, but in many other funds as well. We're seeing some growth there. We have a little bit of an increase for licenses and permits related to some construction projects that we are anticipating for 2019. We have a little bit of a decrease, or a lot of decrease, on our intergovernmental revenue. That's primarily due to grants that we're going to be receiving in 2019, as well as conservation incentives. So those are based on the amount of what we purchase. And so as we purchase less, our incentives also go down. Our charges for goods and services were asked substantially. This is primarily due to the electric utility fund and sort of the mill. And in our miscellaneous revenue, we're looking at some equipment services replacements that won't be occurring in 2019, so transfers for those will not be occurring. And then, in our miscellaneous, excuse me, in our property and trust income and our other financing sources, those are related to capital expenditures and transfers. And then I included reserve use, they're not really considered revenue, but they are in the preliminary budget documents, I wanted to explain what that looks like. Oftentimes, I'm sure you hear us say we sustainably balance the budget, and then you see reserves used. So primarily, especially for 2019, these are all related to capital items, where we can put funds into a reserve account for a period of use to build up that fund to be able to do a project that's in the CFP for a certain year. And then we pull those out of reserves, and we use them to do those capital projects that I do.
Could you go back and say again whether the charges for goods and services have changed? Most, especially?
That is the increase for purchase of power for the mill. But I believe it was over $3 million that we put in the budget for 2019 for that startup. And so, this is just graphically looking at what those same way revenues look like. You can see that total citywide charges for goods and services are the city's largest form of revenues that we receive. And so just in that pop-out, it breaks out the charges for goods and services. You can see electric is probably the largest source there for those charges for goods and services. And then as you go through each utility, you can see what percentage they, they put into that. Those internal charges, the 6.6%, those are allocations. So those are the charges for other funds doing work for each fund. So that's what those are there. And within our taxes, we have three main tax sources, those are primarily in the general funds, property sales and utility. But we do have other taxes in other funds, special revenue funds that we'll be talking about in a lot more detail. So we're going to go right into the general funds. So the general fund is the main operating fund for the city. It accounts for all of the financial activities associated with provision of services and programs. So if you think about that, it's finance, legal, council, any perks of the state, public safety, any, anything that you would typically think of in government, this is where we put it. The general fund also accounts for resources that cannot be accounted for in any other fund. So we have specific... So we have specific requirements for every fund type. If a fund or a revenue amount does not fit into one of those funds, it will go into the general fund. So total for the general fund, we're looking at a $737,000 increase. Primarily, this is due to increase in tax, and that's property tax, sales tax, and utility tax. Again, we are looking at some building permits and check fees and things for upcoming construction projects that we're anticipating for 2019. And then the decrease there in other financing services, that's actually a transfer for capital funds that came from lodging tax for civic improvements that will not be included in the 2019 budget. So looking at general fund graphically, you can see that it's much different than citywide funds. Taxes make up the largest portion of general fund revenue. And again, our three main sources are property, utility, and sales tax. Within our charges for goods and services, we do have things like our building permits and plane check fees. But of that 25.41% for charges for goods and services, 88% of that is actually allocations, so charges from other funds to a different fund for services provided. So this just shows just the taxes within the general funds. So we're anticipating the 1% increase for property tax. That's $45,000 increase. Our sales tax combined, we are seeing a little bit of growth there. So one of the things that we do, and I'll talk about this a little more in another slide, is we look at what is sustainable for ourselves tax. And that's where we come up with these increases. So we do pick that up and look for the growth there. So we're looking at about 3% for next year. Our utility taxes, they're directly related to what Glenn was talking about in his presentation on the co-sign. So as we have changes in rates, as there are changes in use and consumption, we'll have changes in our utility tax. So you're seeing that primarily, mostly an increase in electric utility tax. And again, that's because of the starting for the mill. One other tax I did want to spend a little bit of time on is telephone tax. Historically, we have received quite a bit of tax revenue for that. And I know some of you will recall, a few years ago, we started to see that go down as people started using cell phones or mailing.
That's on my line, I wanted to hear from you.
Yes, yeah, there's... So what we're seeing is we were just anticipating a decrease, or a decrease, or a decrease. And we really weren't seeing an end in sight. So last year, looking at our actuals, looking at what we budgeted for, looking at what we're seeing coming in for this year, we're actually seeing it kind of starting to even out a little bit. And so we're anticipating a $58,000 increase because we believe we decreased the budget too much for 2018. So that's some good news there on the telephone tax. So looking at general funds for other revenue sources outside of tax. I did include tax on here as well, just because they are, again, one of the biggest sources in the general funds. But I do want to talk about the allocations, and that's the support for general fund combined. It's the second largest form of revenues outside of property tax within the general funds. We are anticipating a little bit of a decrease. And again, that is because we've gone through our expenditures so carefully that we were actually able to decrease a lot of the things that were allocated back out. So we're able to decrease charges to users in other funds. So if you look at general fund revenue, and this is just a little bit of everything on here. The largest source of revenue is property tax, that's 23% of the general funds. Second would be interdepartmental charges or allocations, 22.5% of revenues from general funds. 21% of general fund revenues are the combined utility tax. 17.3% of revenues are sales tax. And all of the other revenues within the general fund make up 16.2. That's grants, franchise fees, permits, and other sales tax or other state share revenues that we receive. So looking specifically at property tax, we are going to be talking about this in a lot more detail on November 6th when we bring the ordinance to council. We're going to go through all these different values, what that's going to look like for our levy rate and what that's going to look like on our citizens' bills ultimately. The county has prepared those packets. We've not received ours yet, so I can't give you specifics on this. What I will say is we do anticipate the 1% increase. And that is because it is in our financial policies in section 20813. Just looking at utility tax comparisons from 2018 to 19, our electric utilities, we anticipate the tax will go up 11.05%. And in our water utility, even though we're proposing an increase to rates because of the overstatement on revenues that Glenn was mentioning, the two are going to balance out, partially, so we'll go to the decrease in our utility tax for 2019. And so if you look at all the other changes that are really related to all the things that Glenn was really talking about. One of the questions we often receive are, what are the rates that we charge for our utility tax and where do they come from? So for the electric utility, we charge 6%. And that's actually set by the state, it can't exceed 6%, so we do charge the maximum. Water, wastewater, solid waste collection, we charge 10%. And solid waste transfer station and stormwater, 8%. And those are all set by council. So looking at sales tax, I just want to show the way that sales tax is distributed and what the city receives. So this shows we have 8.7% that we charge in the city for total sales tax. Of that, the city receives 1% plus 0.2% for our transportation benefit district, which goes into a separate fund for capital. So of the 1% that the city receives that goes into our general funds, we pay administrative fee to the state and we also pay a fee to the county that kind of keeps a portion of that. So we receive 0.84%. So for every $10 that is spent in the city that is taxable, we receive less than 10 cents. So I just wanted to show a little bit of history so you can kind of see where our sales tax dollars come from. So by far, our retail trade is the largest form of sales tax that we receive within the city. And those are things like car lots, businesses, grocery stores. Anything like in that category would fall into retail trade. Second largest is accommodation and food services, so those are restaurants and hotels. And I did want to mention, if you see the kind of tan line, that's our construction. So historically, starting about 2015, we had some pretty major or major projects that were going into the city that really drove our construction costs up. Those were complete in 2017, so they came back down. And as I mentioned earlier, we do take those one-time revenues and we do kind of pull apart what kind of sales tax was generated from those projects or from one-time things that we can anticipate, not just in construction, but how did it impact the other categories? And so we pull all that apart. And that's where we come up with what our sustainable growth really looks like for the city. So that's where our 3% increase is coming from. I have any questions on general fund before I move into special revenues?
Could you go back to the sales tax and what is the other services category, especially that spike in 2017?
Yes. Thank you for putting that up, I missed to talk about that. So historically, other services, we were only primarily looking at one category, which is like administrative type services. And then we changed it in 2017 to be other as in everything else. And unfortunately, my charts do not give that to you. So the increase actually from 2016 to 17, I believe, was only about $3,000. So there's not a lot of growth there, but that just explains why you see that spike. It's just the way that we were showing what other services really were. Thank you for putting that up. Okay, so special revenue funds. These are funds that account for and report the proceeds of a specific revenue that are committed for purposes other than debt service and capital projects. So some examples that we're going to be talking about are lodging tax, street real estate excise tax. We have two parts sets, we have one and two, and our Penn Comm funds. So looking at lodging tax, we do anticipate a pretty healthy growth of about 13% for $73,000 in our lodging tax funds for 2019. And that's looking at historical numbers that we found to be more than just a spike for one year. Lodging tax is a pretty hard revenue to predict because there's so many factors that are related to that. The weather, events, time of year. And so they're a little bit difficult to predict. But we are seeing those high revenues continue to stay. So we are accounting for them in the budget. And we do anticipate that at the end of this year, we will exceed our budget as well. So looking at the graph below, the line shows the fund balance and the bars show the tax received for each year. And so you can see we have a pretty large spike in our fund balance and we're smoothing it back out. So that is the resolution that council adopted for lodging tax, keeping 25% for capital projects and 5% in capital reserves. And we do also practice of keeping that 25%. Within the street fund, there's a couple of greater and significant changes in our revenues. One of the biggest sources of revenue for the street fund are our free municipal tax, and that's the state share revenue, so it's been pretty consistent for the last few years. Street-related transfers, the increase that we're seeing there is actually increase the general fund that's transferring to the street department. So that there is now a visa reserves in 2019. So I know that that's been a topic of discussion, the situation of reserves in that fund for many years now. And so we're working to try to eliminate that. One of the other transfers that isn't included there outside of general funds from solid waste, and that's for the trucks and the roads and the maintenance. The decrease in intergovernmental revenue of $40,000 results of us taking the street supervision in 2019 and moving it into stormwater utility because of the requirement to have a street super. So the stormwater utility will no longer be charged for services under the street department. And then also, I just wanted to note that the transportation benefit district funds are not included in the street department. They are in their own capital funds. And we will be talking about that in a little bit. So this just graphically shows what's been going on in the street funds. There's one points out that little orange line in the trading 2019 through 2012 because it discontinued to use to take a portion of progress tax and put it right into streets. And in 2013, we eliminated that and just increased the amount of transport in general funds. Real estate excise tax, we're seeing a pretty significant increase that has been growing for quite a few years. You'll see that we're actually already over budget for 2018. And that's why we have the increase of about $57,000 in real estate excise tax for 2019. And so it's a two-part tax. And so both funds will look the same on revenues because the tax is the same. And just looking graphically at real estate excise tax, you can see the fund balance is pretty high because of those higher than anticipated revenues that we're receiving. And the same thing in real estate excise tax, too. Looking at our Penn Comm funds, we have quite a few changes that are occurring in 2019. There are several sources of revenues in Penn Comm funds. Sales tax is one of them, 1/10 of 1% of that sales tax that you saw goes towards the Penn Comm fund. There's also a tax on your 911 for phone taxes. And they receive capital tax in years that they use capital funds. So it's a direct match that they receive. They also get grants for travel and train. And then they have user fees that they charge to 17 users, including the city. So those are expected to go down in 2019 because sales tax and 911 phone tax is expected to go up partially because of growth and also because they everyone with the county to decrease the amount of administrative fees that they charge from 8% to 2%. So that allowed quite a bit of sustainable growth within Penn Comm. So this just shows Penn Comm graphically. You can kind of see that that sales tax has been going up for the last few years quite a bit. And as a result, we were able to decrease our user fees. Do you have any questions on special revenue funds before I move into enterprise funds? I'll go through enterprise funds quickly because Glenn, I think, covered most of what is in there. But enterprise funds account for activities for which fees charge to external users for goods or services. And these fees cover whole costs to provide these services, essentially their business. And we're going to be looking at electric, water, wastewater, solid waste, stormwater, and medic one. So in electric, as Glenn talked about, we're not really looking at a whole lot of increases for next year. So primarily, a lot of the changes that you're going to see for all the funds are related to consumption and use. And so in electric funds, electric, commercial, industrial, these make up the majority of the revenues there. And large increases, you see, again, are related to the September start date 2019 of the medical mill. For those of you who like to see things graphically, you can see the changes in electric funds historically going back are also related to changes for the mill. I'm looking at the water fund there again. The decreases are related to the overstatement revenues in 2018 and corrected in 2019. As you can see, the growth has been pretty steady. Waste water fund, very minimal growth there. Just a cause of that, a little bit of an increase, the same with oats for 2019. And you can see historically what that looks like graphically. And then the solid waste there again, I think Glenn covered this pretty well on the changes and the usage there. And that's just looking at transfer station. And then again, collections, you can see it's pretty minimal there. Stormwater, we're seeing pretty minimal increases for charges for goods and services. And miscellaneous revenues, that increase there is related to investment insurance for 2019 that we're going to see go up. In medic one, we also have quite a few changes. And that's related to the adoption of the increase for user fees. So we do expect medic one fees to go up, we expect ambulance services to go up. And in 2019, there will be a new revenue source called GEMT. Essentially, this is other money that is going to the state and the state distributes to districts that apply for it. And what it does is it covers the cost of whatever the city actual costs are for transporting someone by ambulance versus the amount that we receive by Medicaid. And so there's a formula that is required that we, and can primarily will submit to the state. And so they'll determine what percent should we get back. In 2019, that number is maybe about $180,000. So one of the things we did, we took these increases for new revenues and for the increase for medic one fee. And we decreased the amount of the general fund transfers to medic one for that amount. So the big increase that you see there graphically in medic one is related to when we increased the four personnel, we increased our medic fees. And a little blue section there is the GEMT funding. Any questions on the enterprise funds? Okay. So the last fund type that we're going to be talking about are capital funds. And essentially, these are used to account for financial resources used for the acquisition or construction of capital facilities and projects. Revenues usually occur in the form of transfers from other funds or from grants. And there is one exception, that's our transportation benefit district, which also receives funding from sales tax of 2%. So 2018, we anticipate that would be around $700,000. We do expect that we will exceed that. In 2018, we are projecting an increase in 2018 of $55,000. There are also grants and transfers that are included in the transportation benefit district. So grants are expected to go down, just the nature of grants. Some years we are able to utilize them and some years we are not. On the transfers, the reason for that large increase or decrease is primarily due to all of transportation projects used to sit in our general governmental accounts. And we had to transfer all of the funds and all of the revenues and everything into that account. So it looks quite large. Other revenue, those are donations for the services that we've been expecting in 2019. So just to finish up, I wanted to send out the reminder for the budget schedule. I did mention earlier, there are quite a few items we're going to be going over in the next about six weeks. So next Tuesday, October 23rd, we have the 2019 preliminary budget rule session where we're going to cover expenditures heavily because we've been talking about revenues a lot tonight. November 6th, we're going to be looking at the property tax presentation with public hearing in the first reading of that ordinance. On the 21st, we'll be looking at the second public hearing adoption of the property tax ordinance and the 2019 budget presentation and public hearing in the first reading of the ordinance. And on the 6th of December, we would be looking at the 2019 budget public hearing and its hopefully adoption during that time for the budget. So this time, I'm available for any questions that you may have on the revenue sources for 2019 before opening the public hearing.
Council, any questions? Looks like we will open the public hearing.
Sorry, I can go after the public hearing. So one of my hypotheses, I guess, it's not important, we're just trying to understand how this was supposed to still work. And partly, I want to ask it because Tess is still here. One last chance to say no, you got it wrong. But it seems to me like the general fund is the hardest fund for us to balance because while with all the utility funds, we do the coastal, we say, oh, we need to raise the weights and then we balance the fund. So the general fund, you know, as we just saw, almost half of this revenue comes from utilities in the form of the utilities tax or the allocation. In other words, paying the labor department, paying the finance department, paying the other departments to do the work for the utilities. So in that, that to me seems like, oh, well, this is why the utility rates get really high. Because for us to balance the general fund, the easiest thing we could do, and I'm not saying this happens now, and I think that we're doing a great job of reducing this now, but it might have happened in the past. To balance the general fund, let's raise utility rates and that gets more money as a general fund. And so that's why I think it's really important that in some way, we have these discussions back to back because that coastal discussion, you know, the budget. back to back because that coastal discussion, Glenn was talking about cost control, but we're talking about intentionally limiting the utility expenses so that, you know, so that we were more fair for the wait payers and utilities. But also the impact of that is that we don't have as much money for the general fund from the utility revenues. And so that's something where within our governmental structure now, and you know, because of the requirements we have to follow, you know, there's some fairness and, how do I put this? There's not a lot of internal checks and balances for us to make sure that we're not raising utility rates in order to help to balance the general fund. Now, I think the last couple of years, and especially having staff doing it ourselves and not outsourcing consultants, I think we've done a much better job of checking ourselves. But it is something that, you know, I, based on this hypothesis, my, my view of one of our jobs as the council is to try to be that check. Because internally, I don't think we have that in our structure. So I'm happy to be proven wrong about that and, and let me know where my assumptions are and where my mistakes are in letting that out. But it is something that I think, you know, it's one of our principal complaints that we hear is the utility rates. And, you know, we can respond and show that, you know, actually utility rates are similar, if not better than other cities in Washington. But we do have this issue that we, it's easier to balance the general fund when we pay, when we charge people more for utility rates. And I think that's a challenge.
I'd like to just add to that a little bit. We, when we look at account transfers, in other words, what the finance department charges a utility or the city manager's department charges, or the legal department charges a utility in enterprise fund, for example, what, what is the rate that they use? You know, how, how is that revenue stream determined? I, I have not, in any of the documents that I've read, said, okay, we're charging you X dollars per hour, just to make it simple. And so what, what Glenn's getting at, and I, I agree with that premise a little bit, it's a little bit nebulous from an accounting standpoint to know how those revenues are created, especially in that category, because it is a significant amount that, that we transfer into the general fund from the utility or enterprise funds for services rendered. And so that's just one aspect of that, maybe checks and balances, if you will, that, that could be helpful. You know, this, we, you know, I mean, we could back it in, chart, you know, and maybe do some reverse accounting and figure out what the rate is. But if it were, you know, maybe published, okay, we, you know, the, the legal department charges $150 an hour and this, this is the number of hours we spent. And I don't want to get really into micromanaging this thing either, but on the other hand, it would really be helpful from my perspective to, you know, what does Bill Ford charges, you know, that type of thing.
Okay. I'd like to explain how the allocations work so that you can understand. The, the general fund is not balanced on the back of the utilities at all. The services that are provided are what they would have to hire to have done if they have, then a separate entity owns by themselves. So we have a very complicated allocation process where we, in finance, for example, track the number of POs we do, how many checks we issue for payable, how many checks we issue for AP, how many lines of transactions we process for each of the utilities as well as for the general fund so that we can get a percentage of how much of our time is actually used by our AP people, how much time is spent billing by not only our miscellaneous receivables, but our, our utility billing people. We have a customer service group within finance that just take, for the most part, 97%, 98% of their time is spent on doing meter reading, taking cashier, the front counter for the utilities. And the other three or two and a half percent, whatever it works out to be, we actually analyze each of those transactions to see which fund it goes to. The other thing that happens with our allocations is we have different criterias. For example, Bill provides at the end of each year a spreadsheet on how many hours from his time card was spent in each department and division. So we know exactly how much time he is allocating. The, the really amazing thing is, is those percentages are pretty consistent year to year. There's a very small difference. The only time that there's any large variance is like when we have a new fund, when stormwater came in, it impacts it a bit because we have a new thing that we're tracking and it takes away the expenses from others. We also are very cognizant of the fact that we have a very limited budget to work with. And in the, in the general fund, everyone is so aware of what they're spending from police, fire, legal, city managers, finance. We all live within a very, very tight budget. So we don't go out and hire 10 people because we could discharge the utilities. We would never, ever do that. We have, I think, very good fiscal controls on this. In fact, the state auditor's office audits this very, very closely every year. Every year, I have to sit down with them since I started with the city to go over what the allocations are, how they're calculated, do they make sense, are we doing it appropriately? And they've actually recommended us to other cities as an example of how to do it. Some other cities generally just say 10 or 15% off the top, that sort of charge is going to be. We actually get it down to what people are actually using, including how much storage do they use on computers, how many phone lines they have, what their data stream costs are, capital projects, all of those things are, for criteria included as well. So I think we're pretty proud of what we do with allocations and don't feel that we can do it any differently or be any more thorough than we currently are.
Just as a follow-up to Tess, the allocation process is a requirement our state auditors expect to see. And as Tess mentioned, they do audit that every year as an interim control. Also following up on the budget process, we give the utilities the same amount of scrutiny that we do for the general fund as we go through it line by line every year. So it is done line by line and we do look for anything that, that we can take out and provide as savings for our citizens. So it is easy to say, oh, we can balance the general fund by using our utilities, but we first and foremost will always do the right thing and we'll find a way to make our general fund balanced from there.
And so, you know, I appreciate the comments from everyone. I think oversight is really vital role that we play. The other side of that though is, as was mentioned before, we're the ones that set the utility tax rate. And so we do have some responsibility as a body to, you know, that's, that's that other side where, you know, and that's something I'm sure we'll have discussions with as we head, this process goes forward through the budget, you know, talks.
Any other questions from counsel? All right. Anybody out there who would like to discuss anything with our revenue sources? This is your time to step up there and ask questions or statements of any kind.
I'll be sure of that. Brian, I know you're doing a good job. I really appreciate that. I know you've got more on your hands than with your staffing than you can do. But I'd really like to see some more impunity on these lawbreakers.
I'm sorry, sir?
Yes?
If anything that you can speak up regarding?
Oh, this right here.
This right here?
Where do we go in our heads? You know, I'm sorry. I came in here sober and I know I still am. Yeah, it is. There's a lot of work to be done and it is hard for the population base to fund the tax base, I know. But you got to get it down somehow. You got to find ways to bring some of that money or spending on other things back to what people can afford to live here. And that's all I'll say about that. And I know you're working hard at it, but I know it's the same for a lot of people. And what about code enforcement on some of these derelict properties? Can you look at that further?
Well, but that's, yeah, thank you. All right. Anybody else behind the revenue sources? All right. Seeing that one, we will go ahead and close the public hearing of this. And of course, this one out. All right. So we will move on to the ordinance for rezon application 18-11 on a medical center. So staff.
Who will be taking that one? That's me, mayor, and members of the council, Allison R. He, Director of Community and Economic Development. In front of you tonight is a rezon application requesting approximately 32 acres of land in Chino from RS7, our residential single family zone to CO or commercial office. In accordance with the Port Angeles Municipal Code as well as the revised code of Washington, a site specific rezon is considered a quasi-dishal matter. Since our code also specifies that no one in the public hearing shall be conducted on such applications. As a result of this required, my counsel has condemned a quasi-dishal proceeding on the public record created through a public, seemingly fine commission public hearing, announced conducting on September 26th. As assessment attached to fine commission staff report, all menus development in City Organism is of course directed through adoption of a comprehensive plan and menus map. All menus development decisions must be supported by the comprehensive plan and menus map. And that was determined to be, it was, it wasn't in binding, this rezon, specifically because the menus map does show the property with the commercial designation. Specifically, the fine commission concurred by a 6-1 vote for a recommendation of approval for the rezon to commercial office. And that's what is particular to the property. The recommendation, I do apologize if there was an error in the agenda, but we actually are recommending that we can wait the second reading. So following the review of the public record created by the commission's public hearing on September 26th, 2018, and per counsel resolution, the meeting will need a second reading for quasi-dishal matters, counsel should conduct a first and final reading of the attached ordinance in support of rezon subject property setting and findings identified as it would be. And mayor, it is, according to my staff, the council consider the appearance of fairness doctrine and just consider any conflict of interest just because the menus is a quasi-dishal issue and matter.
Okay. So counsel, do you really have a conflict of interest with this issue? All right. Let me read the ordinance and then we can have a discussion. So it says, ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, rezoning approximately 32 acres from RS7, our residential single family RS7 to commercial office, C O. So with that, we will, we are going to wait the second reading of this. So please.
I am so proud of Olympic Medical Center, how they serve our community. And I spoke with Eric Lewis the other day at the opening of the Quinn playground over there, Georgiana. And 1,500 people are employed by Olympic Medical Center. That's getting close to 10% of our population and I'm just, and the campus is beautiful. It's state of the art about everything they do. We're very fortunate. We, without a hospital, we wouldn't have a community. So I'm, I'm happy to approve this, but seeing what they've done, everything is so, they think of the future. They're planning ahead, not just for the citizens of today and our medical needs, but 10 and 20 and 30 years ahead. And I, we're very fortunate to have them. I will be approving this application.
Any other questions?
So this, this slogan was very difficult for me. I also support the hospital. I think they do very good work and employ a lot of people at the same time. So I guess I'll start by saying, I understand the staff work that went into this and the financial work that went into this. It represents a legitimate reading of our conference of plan and menus map, a legitimate interpretation of that, I think a very close reading of that. I do not support this. I, I think a different Bible reading of our conference of plan suggests that these neighborhoods should have, should be increasing in density and not decreasing in density. That, you know, it's hard for me to view this rezon outside of the context that there's a, you know, we have a housing crisis and there is a proposal to, you know, renovate a house in a place with a parking lot. We have, you know, 50 years of overbuilt automobile infrastructure and there's a proposal to build more. And so I think this represents a lack of planning and I have a faulty one for doing that. I think if this was brought to me as a, in a different setting, as a legislative matter, I would have a lot to say on it. And this quasi-dishal setting, I, I just think that I favor a different reading of conference of plan with regards to this and I do not support this motion.
Anything else further to speak of this? So when I read this, I had it on G29. It did state that this passed the fine commission with a 6-1 vote, but it was not explaining why there was a one negative vote on this. And I was wondering if staff could fill us in, what happened there?
For memory, I believe that that particular commissioner who voted no was concerned about the lack of transportation connections and somewhat expressed it also of just, actually several commissioners expressed the concern about additional parking for the hospital. But that only was refunded with one negative vote, just for clarification purposes. So a rezon, we have to look at it as we never know really what will come forward as developments. There is a set process in place that will require a conditional use permit process for a parking lot and that if it is changed to commercial zoning, it would not have been permitted at all RS7. So there is an additional public process to consider the appropriate final use of that potential commercial lot.
So they've made this application specifically stating they are going to put a parking lot in there. Is that correct?
That they are, they are indicating that this is the reason why they're asking for a change in zoning because parking is not permitted in RS7 zoning. So while we expect that application to move forward, it's not actually being approved with this rezon.
Okay. And I guess there was another sentence here because Stan responded, he's asking about the parking lots. Stan responded that an alternative and encouraging shared parking facility, however, those will be further evaluated if a parking lot was proposed. And I guess to me, I guess it would be further evaluated, but it seems, I don't know, it seems a little kind of backwards. Knowing that this is happening, is that, I guess you have to do the rezoning first before you can evaluate the use, but yet the use is rather critical as it is, it is reducing density and it is putting something, it will more likely be putting something into a parking lot type of use.
I also have concern about, you know, the transportation element of our conference of plan. You know, we keep suggesting that we support more robust transportation networks, but we don't take those actions and that bothers me. So even small actions like this, I feel the need to read the conference of plan in its full context.
Can I ask, and I apologize if I missed this in the report, but have we analyzed on-street parking availability? Is there shortage of on-street parking availability on Georgiana West Bridge Street?
So staff approached this rezon application asking the question if this property should be rezoned to a commercial office zoning designation. We look at, of course, all the uses that are permitted in that. We looked at, of course, all the uses that are permitted in that zoning designation. A parking study was not conducted at this time because the parking lot is not being proposed nor approved with this action. Code has in place another process that will provide that study consideration by staff, and that's conditional use permit.
Um, would the hospital want to buy its property if they knew they could not turn it into a parking lot? Or would they not want rezon of this? Do they currently own it?
They currently own it.
Okay. And so...
As far as I'm concerned, we're here to approve a rezoning, not a parking lot. And that's the next step for somebody else to approve a parking lot. I'll be in favor of this.
I agree. What's in, we have to approve what's in front of us. It's a rezon. And that's, that's all we're asked, being asked to do. It's approve a rezon and not prove a rezon.
So, um, once the, say the rezon happens, uh, when you're, they're looking at the parking lot, would that come back to council or is that going to be just going to the planning commission? What's the next step?
Um, that would actually, um, forgive me, I think that would be, uh, here in the center.
Right. Yes. Okay. All right, folks.
And I guess I would just push back a little in that, in the rezon application itself, I didn't create this, you know, parking lot out of thin air. Um, in the rezon application itself, they mentioned a paid parking lot. So in the closed record that is before us, that is on the table. So I understand that there's going to be another step in the process, but, you know, I, I just, I see that a parking lot will be rezoned considering that's a positive factor in a rezoning application.
All right. All right, council, how do you want to move forward on this one?
I move to approve the rezon, um, application number eighteen dash forty-one. I'm looking at Medical Center on Francis.
Second. But if there is any...
So, oh, on the ordinance, sorry, ready ordinance. So we'll read again. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, rezoning approximately point three-two acres from RS seven, a residential single family to commercial offices.
I move to approve the ordinance as read.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, we do also need to have a motion to wait the second reading or have it combined in any, any motion for that.
I, I add to my original motion, um, to wait the second reading. If that's acceptable to the second.
Is that acceptable to the second? Okay. So we've got to wait for that and motion.
Given the issue that Councilmember French has raised, I would like to examine this further unless I would vote, um, in favor of it, but not with waiting the second. I, I'd like more, more time to consider these issues that were brought before us today.
All right. So given that, would you guys be willing to wait the second reading? And I am, gosh, I'm torn on this one. I'm torn in the sense that, um, I, the application clearly states that that's what they want, is a parking lot. Um, and so therefore, we know that that's where it's going. And I agree that, um, the lack of transportation and the increased transportation system, there's not, hasn't been any, any parking lot study done because I know it's first to do the rezoning. But it is clearly stated that they want to do a parking lot there. And so therefore, um, it's, I don't know how well our hearing examiners, you know, is following up on some of the transportation systems or following up on our comprehensive plan as to how well that fits. And so therefore, it really is, um, not, it, it's really not pushing forward while we talk about, you know, increasing our transportation system so that it works for everybody and it's not just cars and a lot of parking spaces. And so, um, I am struggling with this one as to, um, yeah, as to why, as to whether, oh, doing this one. So I would appreciate a little more time to just truly consider this. General, yes, general.
They did, I guess I'm not clear here. It says right in, uh, it says background and analysis. In accordance with the Port Angeles Municipal Code, a site-specific rezon is considered a quasi-judicial matter. Section eighteen point zero-two of the Port Angeles Municipal Code specifies that no more than one public hearing shall be conducted on such application. Okay. Why do we need to, uh, have a, a motion and a vote on whether there's a second, uh, public hearing or not? It's, it says right here that only one is allowed.
So Mayor, council, the, the public hearing was already conducted. So tonight's, um, uh, tonight's effort is not a public hearing. So that one public hearing was already conducted at the planning commission level. Uh, tonight's decision is for council to make a legislative decision ultimately on a quasi-judicial matter of closed record, the record of which was created before planning commission.
So again, my, my question is, why is there need for a motion to have even a second public hearing when one has already been taken, has already been taken place? And the, and our code specifically states that none is required.
So I, I think the, the point that staff was trying to make is that the, the second reading for quasi-judicial matters by council policy gets waived. Um, the basis for that is to ensure that we can meet time constraints that are identified through the Growth Management Act. And, and so therefore, we only do one council reading, uh, on those ordinances and typically adopt the same night. But certainly it is council's purview to decide ultimately on how to proceed.
But actually, it's interesting, I think you do have a point there that if we, if it's a matter of order, you know, rule that we always wait the second one, uh, one way, if we just say it just has one.
But we, we waited a second public hearing, or sorry, the only person with public hearing, but we were doing, we're talking about the readings. So we waited the second reading, neither of these are a public hearing. Public hearing wasn't the planning commission.
My general rule is that we have two readings of the ordinance. Are we at risk of Growth Management Act violation if we don't approve this tonight? We approved it, um, at our first meeting in November.
I don't, I don't have the timeframe specifics on it, but no, I don't believe you're at any sort of specific risk by not approving it tonight. I think it's still council's purview whether you approve, continue, deny, whatever your choice may be as far as the decision. Ultimately, there may be some risk, um, relative to if we haven't fulfilled the timeframe specified for rezon. If we don't meet that timeframe for a decision one way or another, then there may be, there could be an issue, a challenge if a challenge is made in the future.
So I have a comment about the issue and not the process, um, if I can make it quickly. My sense is that, I, I recognize that they're saying that the intention is to go for a conditional use permit to build a parking lot. Um, I recognize that that has a separate process and that what we're doing here is to the letter of the comprehensive code within the, fits within what we said we want to do. I'm sort of inclined to, I'm feeling inclined at this point to vote in favor of this because I also think, um, knowing number of people who work at the hospital, um, I, I'm not a fan of parking lots, but I also think, I don't live in that neighborhood and I don't have to deal with having to come home with my kids and my groceries and park a lot away from my house because employees have parked along there because they don't have other places to park. Um, that feels like something that, voting on this and then going through that conditional use permit gives those people an opportunity to talk about that so we can capture that piece of information. Um, so I'm inclined to say yes and move forward on that process, giving, and therefore give the, um, community around the hospital opportunity to speak to that issue.
I concur with Deputy Mayor Dexter. We are here to approve or not approve a rezon application. We're not here to second-gasp the examiner. We're not here to have a public hearing. We're not here to, to approve or disapprove a conditional use permit. And I've heard so much discussion tonight about approve or disapproving a conditional use permit that we're not here to do. We're here for one simple step, and that's the rezon application. This is a rezon application before us, plain and simple. And we have to take the facts of the rezon and vote on that. There's an entire process, and I know the public examiner, public hearings examiner welcomes input on any conditional use permit application or procedure. And he's very professional. He or she are very professional with they do. I've been to conditional use permit hearings and they're very thorough. And, and that's a separate process, but that's not our process. So getting back to what we're doing, I'd like to call the question and vote on the rezon application.
Well, I guess we've got a couple more questions before we go here.
Call the questions aside right away, point of order.
All right. Sorry. Um, so...
Molly, do you have a second?
I, I seconded.
All right. So now we have...
All right. So we got a point of order, so if we are ready to vote on this, please...
We're voting and call the question. Actually, it's five votes to pass. So the three of us voted no to call the question or continue the discussion.
So to call the question, uh, if you're in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
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 If you're not in favor, please say no.
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 Nay.
Sorry. All right. So it fails. So, um, so my question is, um, the, does the hospital own also the other two lots that are next to the one that's being rezoned? Because then that way, I mean, it makes sense that the whole, it's interesting that it's only one. And then now it's going to leave two residential lots in between of that zoning. So it's not having real contiguous zoning throughout. Um, so I was just wondering if you could go ahead.
So staff definitely recognized that on the, when staff first met with the hospital group, it was encouraged, they approached those owners and asked if they'd be willing to be a part of a rezon application. Uh, those owners did not want, they are current owners of single-family houses and did not find it, um, valuable or desirable to rezon to a commercial zoning. However, staff needed a determination that there is, um, commercial adjacency to the South.
Right.
Though it's not the same commercial adjacency that there is, you know, when it's considered spots zoning because there is commercial adjacency.
So, yeah, so these two homes will be sandwiched between commercial...
And I also may add just, you know, conditional use permit criteria. There, there is a certain, a definite public process criteria that has to be considered for all conditional use permits in addition to consideration of public comment. Um, certainly if parking is proposed, um, I believe the reason why a conditional use permit is in our code for a surface parking lot is somewhat to indicate that it's not favorable. Um, so staff is intending to look at the overall parking supply for the hospital. Um, certainly, and their staff analysis, just to see where they are at, um, how much they might be above a, you know, the minimum required. But that analysis hasn't been done in detail at this time. We always have to wait for that actual conditional use permit application to come in because recognizing, well, they might intend to do parking at this time, they could actually change their mind and come in with a new application for a commercial.
So I just wanted to respond with a few things. Um, I, I, you know, I don't think that we're here to evaluate conditional use permits. And I appreciate Director Rettick's comments on that process because there were some things I wasn't sure of. But I do think what we're here to do is interpret the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. And my, when I was looking through this issue, I just cannot take a close reading of the comprehensive plan of this rezon. I have to see the comprehensive plan in context. And what I see in the comprehensive plan is a, an actual vision for how we plan and how we incorporate transportation and all these other issues into these decisions. Um, you know, what, what strikes me, just having this discussion, is how valuable a sub-area plan would be for this district because it has, is going to have its unique issues in how it grows and the vision. Because I do think we've seen enormous growth in that area with our hospital, and that's great. They've served our community extremely well, but managing that growth and planning for how that happens is really vital. And I just want to respond really quickly on parking lots. You know, putting them in neighborhoods, building automobile infrastructure incentivizes people to use them. So we could be increasing traffic in that neighborhood, a specific block by putting a sub-area parking lot that, you know, isn't, isn't off-site commercial parking lot. It's not even, you know, it's not for a building on that lot. It's for buildings on, you know, it's meant to serve buildings far away. So again, I know this isn't about parking lots. This is about how we interpret the comprehensive plan.
So just for a reference, I look at the comprehensive plan and I think the intersection that we're concerned with this parcel being on, East Georgiana and North Francis Street, is right on the land use line bubble. And these are, in the plan, it's fuzzy, not every parcel is correctly allotted or not. It's kind of fuzzy boundaries. And so we're right on the boundary between a spot that's supposed to be commercial and a spot that is supposed to be a residential. There's a little pocket of a residential in the common plan, kind of north and west and a little bit, mostly north of this parcel. So I would like more time to consider this issue in light of the things I've heard from the council today. And that's the reason why we have two readings of ordinances. So we can have time to think about what we hear the first time. This has nothing to do with the applicant. It has to do with the large and long-term picture of our city and how we best use, um, you know, parcels. Right there on the boundary between commercial and residential. And, um, you know, for the other issues, particularly that Councilmember French has raised, are important to consider. So I would like more time to consider it. I haven't heard a reason why we can't have that more time. So with a particular motion on the table, I will be voting no because I would like to have a second reading of this issue.
Anybody else who would like to comment on this? So in that case, I, I have appreciated the ideas that have been brought up. Um, like I said, I, I am struggling with this one because it is exactly at that border. And I hate to think that we're actually making the problem worse for the residential folks that are there because of the potential of what this parcel could be turned into. You're right. Absolutely right. You will get it and they will come, kind of thing. And so, um, I am, uh, I, I'm, you know, I would appreciate more time to give it some real thought about it. And, um, so right now I, I can't support it. I totally appreciate the hospital. I think they're doing a marvelous job, but this one I, I'm struggling with and I cannot support it at this exact moment. I, I do, I would like to sit on it and think about it.
Can I ask a procedural question, just based on my locker experience? If the motion on the table fails, can we bring a second motion to, does it just kill it? Or is there an opportunity to bring a second motion to potentially allow for more time and bring it to the next meeting so that we're not killing it, but thinking about having the opportunity to think about it a little longer? Is that...
The, if the motion on the table now fails, that does not mean you are rejecting the rezon application. There's a, there is possibility to, uh, still consider the rezon application. It simply means you would not be really in the...
May I ask a procedural question? Okay. The motion was to pass the, uh, the rezon. And was, there was a friendly amendment to this, uh, motion that, okay. So we have to vote on the friendly amendment first, and then we, then we have to vote on the, uh, the motion to approve or disapprove this rezon. Is that not the procedure to... Is that not the procedure that we're in right now?
No, ma'am. I think I added it to the motion.
She added the motion and the second, accepted it in the motion.
So it's not a friendly amendment, but you just restated the motion.
Right.
So I would ask if you would object to the motion being amended back to having a second reading.
I think that question was asked in a revision.
Okay, you may have to ask a new motion.
I think we should go ahead and vote on the motion on the table.
All right. Okay, so we've got a motion on the table to approve the ordinance as read and also to waive that second reading. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
So...
Can you see raise your hands, please?
All the, sorry, the, all the ayes, please raise your hand. So the motion fails. So, counsel, how do you want to move forward?
I move to send this issue to our next meeting for a second reading.
That works. Continue it to the next meeting.
Thank you, continue that ordinance.
Second. All right, any further discussion on this? All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
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 So we have, okay, so those, all those in favor of the motion to continue this to the next meeting, please raise your hand. Those yea, yes, opposed. So three, so that motion failed. All right, so we don't want to continue it to next week, and we don't want to vote on it yet. So, counsel, how do we move over?
That's for you, Councilor French, because you, I know you have two questions.
Having said, it was a very good discussion. I think the construction, the capital cost made it really quite easy because everyone knew exactly what needed to be pulled out. And then we did have a lot of discussion as to the chamber and the amount and then the marketing. And so, I know that there was a, because some of the other amounts were smaller, it was at the very end you kind of decided, okay, let's go ahead and do the smaller ones.
May I interrupt? I just wanted to disclose that I am the council representative on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. That is an exception to the interest provision. So, official complacency, I just wanted to state that if I'm a member of the Board of Directors, I've a lot of insight into a lot of these things that I counsel to address. I'd have to talk more about that in the beginning of that second motion.
Okay. Anyway, and so, let's say the issues with Cargill Bridge and Recreation Law Field, all of those pretty much went to the total amount. And I think it was, so, it seems like the committee was content to do that. And then, if there was differences, it came out of the Tourism Commission and Marketing Services. And so, again, it's like, because there is a flex, we don't know exactly how many, how much logic tax money we're going to get. And so, they felt like that flex could be taken up in that larger amount.
So, I have a lot to say about this first part, but to start with, I'm going to move that we approve the Logic Tax Committee's recommended budget, which I expect to carry into their budget and its review.
Second.
And then, as far as discussion, you know, there's a lot to cover. We had a really, a lot of new members on our Logic Tax Advisory Committee. And I would like to, you know, there, I don't, I think they did great work. There was some amount of apprehension with that much, you know, change on a committee. I feel comfortable with the result that, you know, and I, they were apparently really good by their conversations about a lot of these issues. And so, I really appreciate the work that the committee did. As regards to specific kind of things, I, I think that you guys did a great job on the capital facilities, getting that reserve started. The one, the one thing I mentioned this, I think to Mr. Weiss, is, one thing that does concern me with that new capital budget, capital facilities policy, is that I want to make sure we still give each individual a request a lot of scrutiny, to make sure that, you know, just because it's a capital request and we want to focus on capital facilities, that any request that gets passed, it gets fully funded. There are still considerations, and I don't, I don't think that any of these requests are out of line. But, you know, in the future, I want to make sure that we're, that facility reserve is not just lip service, that we're actually saying, what is the best use for each of these categories? Is the best use this proposal? If not, definitely should just go with service instead, sometimes it's, you know. So, that's one comment, although I think, like I said, in this specific go around, great work. I, I like the flexibility that you granted for the marketing services. I, you know, I kind of have this unpopular opinion that this committee, that marketing is less valuable than other people think it is. And that's a long and complicated discussion, but I liked that you did that flexibility. Where you said, well, let's cut back a little bit, but if revenues come in, we can, you know, show that. There was something else I was going to mention, but, yeah, like I said, all in all, I think these were really very good today, but I'm happy to approve them.
Any further discussion?
I was just going to mention, in forming council over the branches, note, I am a non-doing council representative on the Fair and Bright Life Center Board. Again, I don't believe there's a common interest, I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Any further discussion? We've got a motion on the table and a second. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it to the panelists. And so, now, we have to take up the issue of the contract.
I'd like to move that we approve a three-year contract for the Port Angeles Regional Chamber of Commerce to operate the visitor center.
Second.
All right. And I guess, so let's have some discussion.
Yeah, so I'd like to hear more. I mean, we're talking about going from seventy-four thousand to ninety-seven thousand. That's a really big increase in one year, and we're going to set that in for three years. So, I want to hear your opinion.
So, the Director of the Chamber of Commerce is here. He wants to ask some questions, but I can speak to a few of these things. So, first off, I don't believe we've had a significant increase in that allocation for a long time. And so, you know, as we see influx of tourists and more things harassing them, I do think that's a reasonable request. So, there's a couple, you know, things happening. You know, one other discussion we're having with Chamber of Commerce is a large discussion about what do we want the visitor center to look like. And so, going forward in the future, I think that's something we need to counsel, like I've mentioned this before in council reports, that we need to think of what, what are we asking from our Chamber of Commerce for that contract? And that might be a long-term vision that we need to talk about, where is it going to be looking, what is it going to do, and how is it going to function? But, like I said, Mark's here, if we have a specific question, so we can, if there's a stretch we could ask.
Sure. Our Chamber of Commerce is an irreplaceable, valuable resource, our visitor center. Now, what we do not see in the budget are all the volunteers that work there, all the hours, people work for free because they want to, people who really like Port Angeles, understand where they are and, and be hospitable. And so, we're really, ROI here for this amount of money is tremendous because we, we're getting labor for free, we're getting customer service for free. And it's essential. Every place you go, we, you have to go to the visitor center to find your way around. And so, this is really a remarkable asset for us. And these volunteers have been there for years, sometimes decades. Their commitment is, is amazing. So, I just think, and the number, the previous number, seventy-four thousand, six hundred, that's tremendously lower than it used to be because it used to consider marketing services. So, we've cut it way back. And because we are so successful in marketing our community with the events that, since we've had our marketing company, Vertigo, I want to say more things, Vertigo. We're just having tremendous success each year. And so, they simply have to deal with, with more people. And, believe me, that's, that's quite a task, and they're doing it beautifully. So, I would support the numbers because the expenses, I think he, there's a list on what the expenses are, but we're kind of normalizing those fundings from having everything cut back. So, I support it.
So, Jim, your own. Jim?
I have firsthand experience at working the visitor center. My wife and I work there at least once a week. And I can tell you, the influx of visitors has increased, and the amount of supplies that, that we go through is amazing. So, but, I'd like to speak to the three-year extension of the contract, two things. First of all, from a practical standpoint, it allows our Chamber Director to go to the building owner and negotiate a three-year contract from a position of strength rather than, than not. And, and so, the lease arrangements can be more favorable. And, second of all, you know, the chamber is, is really synonymous with, with the visitor center, not only in Port Angeles, but everywhere you go. And so, the, the chamber directs the visitor center, the chamber personnel arranges for the volunteers that serve there, and, and then to keep it staff and to keep it supplied is just a tremendous job. I would love to give some commendations or acknowledgement to Carol Simpson for her tremendous job in, in doing that. So, but I, I think a, a three-year extension is appropriate. And finally, I, I don't see the need for, for asking anybody else if they're interested in it because of the tradition and excellent work. In other words, in April, let's not try to fix it.
Right.
So, the thing I forgot to mention, Jim kind of mostly covered this, great. And I would like to just agree, you know, one of the, the pieces of this is that the building that it's operating in has a new owner. And so, I think that's, that's the main reason for the three-year contract request, is for that lease negotiation, which is going to be up this, this summer 31st, I think. So, and, and, you know, I, I do think that just, we all probably remember on the staff board, and for this year, one thing that was there was an RFP both for Vertigo and for the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center contract. And I don't think I've chosen to go that direction. So, that three-year contract without the RFP, there is some amount of concern there, but I think with the quality of product that we get from the Chamber of Commerce and with the direction that we get from Mark, I have zero problem granting that three-year contract without that RFP having been done.
I'd move to direct the city manager to prepare a three-year contract with the Port Angeles.
It's already been moved and seconded.
I, I.
Now, we separated it.
No, I think Jim will. I, I already.
Sorry, I apologize. So, what's the motion on the table, Jim?
Two, three-year contract.
But there's no three-year contract available.
Well, I think you read the motion, but I have recorded it.
That's not a motion, that's to discuss.
Oh, you're right.
I left the word discuss out. My motion was that the Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce be given a three-year contract for operation of the visitor center. I believe that was my motion.
And I believe I seconded it.
And Mike seconded it.
So, Rick, I, I mean, I'd like to know what the contract is before I approve it. So, yeah, I mean, so, so that's the issue. I, I, I hear everyone's concerns or, or statements, and I'd say, and this isn't because I don't want to, I just want more information. So, I mean, I'd say a lot of these organizations do operate on volunteers, so that doesn't make visitor centers' requests substantially more unique. I also am not sure what, if, if the reason is we're sending out a lot more supplies, twenty-three thousand dollars doesn't explain, that's a lot of piece of paper. So, I, I just want more information before I approve the contract. So, that's why I prefer to direct staff to prepare a contract rather than approve a contract that I haven't seen right now.
Point of order, we've already approved the, the money for the, the visitor center.
We only approved the money for one year. So, we did not approve the money for three years. And that's the difference, and that's the distinction of why we have to have this conversation as to what happens year two and year three.
So, if we, if we pass the motion as it's currently stated, will we still, at the, at a future meeting, have a contract to look at after?
Well.
Or would it be a contract with the city and not one that we would, is that one that you would normally execute?
I think one thing that could potentially be done under the current motion that's on the table would be to basically extend the existing contract for a three-year period with an increase in funds for that three-year period. That might be one interpretation, but similarity would be really helpful. And it, and it may be beneficial if the individual making the motion would be willing to simply authorize the city manager to draft a contract, bring it forward to the city council for approval. At the November 6 meeting, we'd be more than happy to do that, but I don't, do not want to interfere with a motion on the table.
So, Jim, would you accept Nathan's addition to just bring the contract to the table? So that we can take a look at the contract?
My motion really was, as a point of clarification, my motion was to extend, really, the intent was to extend the current contract. So, we already have an existing contract, and we're not rewriting a new one, just extending the time period of that contract. So, that's the intent of my motion. Does that add clarification? Or do you, or you still think it needs another motion? Because, again, we have an existing contract, expires. My, my intent in my motion is to extend the, the, the existing contract for another three years as opposed to rewriting a, a brand-new contract.
Well, and so, clarification, so, the, because there's a change in amount, so the contract is, is going to change because of the amount regarding. So, that's one of the things. And so, in, during the meeting, it, it was stated that the owner is requesting a three year, that you've already set the lease for the three years, that the amount is, I think there's ten thousand and a half for staff increase. So, I think, you know, as you're saying, those numbers are pretty large. I, I was going to add ten thousand dollars for, for staff. So, that's give or take. And so, and that was going to flex as well. So, we do have to, you know, every year on logic tax, the amount is something that, if we state today that, that the same amount is going to be for three years, or do we state that we want to give them a three-year contract with, we get to pick an amount? Or do we, you know, it's like, but we can't, actually, we can't, the amount is an issue because we don't have the money for next year. So, can, can we, how do we deal with the amount? Because we don't have the amount for next year.
In my, in my opinion, council would have the authority to allocate for a three-year period and sign a three-year, basically have a three-year contract executed. There's a number of ways of doing that. As Councilmember Moran has made a motion, I think one way of doing that would be simply to approve the contract for a three-year period at the dollar amount reflected in the allocation that was already approved this evening, for that same amount to continue for three years. I believe that, as I understand it, that would be Mr. Moran's intent on that. And if, you know, if council wants to see a contract back before you that you actually review and approve, then that might be a different motion.
So, and to add more clarification as well, is, as I understand it, the owner is stating that the chamber will have to move from that building. And I thought it was after the three-year contract was up that you were, that.
Should I clarify?
Yes, please. Because that was my thought at the meeting, we were talking, if you're looking to move because of the raise also of the lease, then maybe you should move.
Yeah, so I can clarify. So, we have, we have a contract for the building, the Chamber of Commerce, between the chamber and the, the building owner. And that contract expires December 31st. The building owner and I are in negotiations for a new contract. He's stated to me that he's willing to sign a three-year contract with the chamber. That's why I'm requesting a three-year contract with the city, because the chamber cannot sign a three-year contract with the building owner without a contract with the city to run the visitor center. So, we would be then, if it's not approved to do a three-year contract with the city, then I would have to go back to the building owner and say, I really only have approval for one year, so I can only do one year with you. So, that's, that's what's really on, on the table. An issue that I brought up in the advisory committee is that that building owner has a lot of options that he can decide upon on what to use that, that building for. And I know that he's got plans for the future for it. I just don't know the timeline of that. So, as we sit here today, he's willing to do three-year more years for the city to continue occupying that building to run the visitor center. If we, if I just, if I talk to him again this year, next year at this time, he may have a different, he may have a different feeling about, and so, what I'm getting at is that that building may not be available past 2019, this time next year. But we can lock it in now if we do a contract.
So, could you also speak to the issue that we talked about, having the park potentially, you know, having one place where, you know, integration to the park? Because that was also something that the committee heard.
Correct.
As to, well, maybe it is time to find a better home for all of you.
Right, so the chamber, the chamber board, and I don't, Mike French is on the, we have a subcommittee that is actually looking at future options for where the visitor center might be, keeping in mind that we are expecting that we may not be able to renew a contract with that building owner down the road. We just don't know what point that's going to be. And so, in our view, the chambers' view, is if we get a three-year period, which I know we can get right now, we get, we can lock in that three-year period right now, that gives us three years to work out what our future, what the city's future visitor center is going to look like, where it's going to be, all that stuff. And part of that research is in conversations with the National Park Service, with NOAA, and other potential partners who we might be able to do a multi-agency kind of a visitor center, which is something we're exploring. We don't know that that's the answer, it's just something we're looking at. But this kind of thing takes a while, it's not something you solve or in one year, especially work with the federal government. We need, you know, a few years of runway in order to figure out what it's going to be. That's, that's really the reason for the three-year request.
Okay, because I know that during, in the committee, there was also a little concern to also not locking in for three years, because if you got it all salted two years, then.
That's not going to happen.
It was a hopeful thing.
It's going to be a struggle to get it out.
It was a hopeful thing to try and get everybody on the move, because I think it's a really great idea. So, but anyway, so that was part of the conversation. So, if we can clarify at least the motion at this point in life, to make sure that it is applicable. So, is a contract extension at the current amount?
Nice.
So, I, I would be inclined to kind of go either way. I do think that it's reasonable for other council members to ask to see a contract. I think that that would be a very reasonable way of moving forward, to allow the city manager to draft that and bring it back to us with the other thing, with a three-year contract.
Yeah, I think if I was in, I mean, if I was in our shoes, or if I was in, you know, our, our staff shoes, I would want to just look it over and make sure that taking one year of your contract and changing it to a three-year contract actually.
It's a three-year.
It's currently a three-year. Okay, so we're renewing a current three-year contract to another three-year contract.
Yeah.
So, from your idea, no problem with, I mean, just renewing those, a three-year contract into another three-year.
Correct.
And then, Mayor of the Council, the, the existing contract, from staff's perspective, is a very good contract. There's no need to be making significant changes to it. In fact, it also incorporates the concept of looking into other options for visitor center in the future. So, we wouldn't have to have no problem extending that. It's just a matter of getting the council authorization to do the extension as Councilmember Moran recommended.
Okay, so, I can't think of anything else to add, can I?
The only other last thing I'd like to say, this happened a long time ago now, but Lindsay, our councilwoman, for sure, Mark, originally was asking about that increase in cost. And, you know, from the perspective of a board member on the Chamber of Commerce, I see how much time the visitor center takes to market. The Chamber of Commerce is doing a lot right now. It's doing more events than it ever has done. It's doing just, you know, it doesn't have that marketing contract it had years ago, but it's doing a whole lot of things that are very vital for our community. And I think that kind of also represents just an accurate accounting of how much time it takes Mark to run it. So, I do think that that's a reasonable request. Like I said, I don't think that that has been, you know, increased since that marketing contract in a way. And I could be wrong with that, I'll add it to your personal.
You know, the only thing that this contract, as I say, there is a ten thousand dollar increase, but it becomes a three-year, so it's a thirty thousand dollar increase for staff. And that's, you know, and it's, it's, it's one of those things, it's like, yeah, okay, ten thousand, a raise for folks, but every year for the next three years is a ten thousand dollar raise for staff. And that, according to the budget, is just, it's like, it's there, and you are having all those extra increases for extra, you know, mailings and things like that. So, it's, that one's just a little too much. But, you know, I totally think what you're doing is great. I think that we have a great center, we have great volunteers, and the work that's done as well. It's just that the increase, you know, I get that there's an increase in the lease, but there is about a ten thousand dollar increase for staff for every year, and there is an increase.
No, it's just an increase for this year, but then there's no positive increase the next year.
Next year, if you look at the, if you look at the increase in the budget that we were given, the, the numbers, so it's ten thousand for staff, X numbers for mailing and things like that, so there's another ten thou, you know, so every year, it's, so, I guess, well, once you put it in, you're paying ten thousand every year, actually. So, yeah.
If I give you a, if I give you a ten thousand dollar raise.
Right, you wouldn't want it.
Next year, I'm going to take it away.
No, no, I agree with that. You know, but I'm just saying, it's just, it's, you know, I want to keep.
It's not increasing ten thousand a year, it's just.
Same.
You're right.
You're right, it's staying the same, and I guess what it is, is just, I, I wonder, you know, how we folks out here are getting a ten thousand dollar raise.
But our workload is increasing at the visitor center, that's the point. More people are coming, there's more work to do.
I call a question.
Thank you. Second, we need a second on the call.
All right, let's call a question. So, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
No, we've got to call the question.
We've got to call the motion.
Let's call the question.
Yeah.
All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, let's call the question. So, we're calling the question. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Could you read the motion, please?
Extend the current contract for Angeles Regional Chamber of Commerce for three years to the visitor center.
Aye.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes again in this room.
All right. So, we are moving on to the annex.
So, I just wanted to first address the issue that Councilmember Kiris at the beginning about procedures from the items. In Section 7 of the Councilable Procedure, it says, except for announcements late items that the city manager does not receive by the stated deadline, which is the Wednesday prior 5:00 p.m. on the Wednesday proceeding meeting, by the stated deadline shall not be considered by the council except upon a majority vote of the members present. So, if you have to remember, you can raise the point of order and call for that majority vote if you want. So, on the substance, this is a proposed resolution, and I'll just read it since it's a late item that wasn't in the packet, people haven't had a chance to see it. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, authorizing the city manager to direct the city attorney to request a leave from the Washington State Supreme Court to file an amicus writ in the case of Kuhn v. Seattle in support of the exercise of broad home rule authority granted to certain cities in Washington State, as well as the motion to file such a brief. Whereas the city of Washington in some instances has failed to recognize the broad home rule authority granted to certain cities in Washington State, and whereas the city of Seattle exercising the authority of the right of home rule, passing an ordinance imposing municipal tax, and whereas the King County Superior Court in the number 2017 ruled against Seattle's ordinance, and whereas the city of Seattle is appealing the King County Superior Court ruling in a petition for a direct review by the Washington State Supreme Court, and whereas greater recognition of the broad home rule authority granted to certain cities in Washington State, including the city of Port Angeles, will further the city of Port Angeles's objectives of responsibility to municipal government, budgeting, and provision of necessary services to the community. Now, therefore, this Port Angeles City Council hereby resolves all of section 1. The city of Port Angeles declares that greater recognition of the broad home rule authority granted to certain cities in Washington State, including the city of Port Angeles, will further the city of Port Angeles's objectives of responsibility to municipal government, budgeting, and provision of necessary services to the community. Section 2, that the city manager hereby authorize to direct the city attorney to join the city of Port Angeles in the city of Olympia and amicus writ in the case of Kuhn v. Seattle, Supreme Court, House Number 95291, I'm sorry, 95295-7, in support of the exercise of broad home rule authority granted to certain cities in Washington State, as well as the motion to file such a brief. So, that's the resolution that I am bringing forward to the council. The reason for this, well, it's, it's a late item because it was coming to my attention last, last week, and I didn't get it in, in time for the council packet, so I apologize for that. I did have the opportunity to speak with the mayor of Oland for Olympia yesterday, and after he talked to Olympia's attorney, they said that we could still join the amicus brief if we resolved to do it tonight. So, we can either vote to do it or not, but, you know, we don't get to delay this decision and have it have any meaning. I want to clarify what's, what's not before the council makes resolution. This isn't a question of the sound judgment of the policy, that's an issue in the case that the city of Seattle passed. This is about whether we want to join a brief that's already been written by the city of Olympia in advising the Washington Supreme Court on the importance of home rule power for cities, first-class cities in the case of Seattle, but also co-cities like the city of Port Angeles. And as the resolution says, the implications of home rule versus, versus Dillon's rule, I think are really important for us at the city. The, the background of it is in the 19th century, justice is disagreed about where local government came from and how broad local government power was. And a certain judge, Dillon, said that, you know, local governments can only do what they, you know, what the state expressly authorizes them to do. And so, it's very narrow reading of local government authority, partly in response to corruption at the local level and those sorts of things. But Dillon's rule narrowly confined local government authority. Judge Dillon went on to become a. Judge Dillon went on to become a railroad attorney after being a judge, Iowa Supreme Court judge. And a lot of the people at the end of the 19th century disagreed with Dillon's rule and wanted to seek broader local government authority. They felt that that was important for democracy and, and democracy in our country in general because, you know, it holds more power closer to the people where there's more accountability. So, when Washington became a state for first-class cities, we put in our state constitution home rule powers for first-class cities, meaning that local governments, well, those cities could do what, you know, what they need to do to protect people's health, safety, and welfare unless it was contradicted by state law. When we did the code city, well, when the state legislature did the code city statutes in the middle of the 20th century, the legislature also expressed those broad home rule powers at the local level. But unfortunately, at different times during the 20th century, the courts have reverted to Dillon's rule, the idea that local governments can only do what they're expressly told they can do by the state. And it appears that the, the King County Superior Court reverted to Dillon's rule in its ruling concerning Seattle's ordinance. So, the issue for us is that, you know, we, we operate based on not the express authority of the state in every instance of what we do, but in the, the home rule framework that we're able to act for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Port Angeles. And this case has the potential to narrow that power, and thus, I think it is important for us to weigh in on it and join this brief. All, all the work that we've done is simply a matter of us saying, we'd like to join the city of Olympia's brief. Although the city of Olympia's brief is also joined by the Association of Washington Cities, and I've, I've heard that other cities have been able to join it in the last, either tonight or last night, but I haven't been able to agree on that.
Mountain here. Again, back to point of order, this, we have not even agreed that, I mean, this is our council procedure because it needs to be submitted by the Wednesday before unless the council agrees.
Do you want to be an ass? So, let's, let's ask the council if they agree to...
We haven't even agreed to discuss this.
So, council, who would, I guess, do we need a motion, get them a brief? Sorry, you have a motion, council?
Madam Mayor, consensus of four, I raise it in, should, should be sufficient.
Okay, who would want to discuss this tonight? Who would consent to discuss this tonight? So, we got four, so we've got consensus to discuss this tonight. All right, so, seeing that, are there questions in this? I know that this is a last-minute one, it is actually quite a lot to get, wrap your head around. I would like to ask Mr. Lor if, where are the drawbacks to joining this?
I want to, first of all, say that I fully support the, the concept of the home rule and everything that we can do to promote home rule, I'm fully in favor of that. The drawback, the drawback is that the council could be associated with the action of the city of Seattle in attempting to impose income tax on wealthy people, which is actually what precipitated this case. Now, in the, so that's the act, Seattle attempted, is attempting to impose income tax on wealthy people that are challenged, this case him as a result of that. The amicus brief that the city would be joining does not address that issue. The amicus brief that the city would be joining is simply an affirmation of an attempt to have the court affirm the viability of home rule for code cities. And that's very much a concern for Port Angeles in particular because we just come through this debate about second-class city. And home rule was at the very crux of that debate about the second-class city issue. Do we want to have home rule where we have broad powers where the city can, can exercise our own authority to deal with our own local problems, and that's what comes down to. Home rule city would have the authority to deal with our own local problems. A Dillon's rule city does not. I think, I personally really enjoyed the case that we're judged Dillon in the analysis rule. In that case, there was the city of Flitton, I think, Flitton, Iowa, and it was an incorporated city and under the statutes of the state of Iowa, it had the authority to control its streets, just like Port Angeles controls its streets. But at the same time, the state had granted a franchise to a railroad company to build a railroad on a certain route that went through Flitton. And so, the people of Flitton said, we really don't want to build your railroad down Main Street. And that was the issue. The railroad said, there's nothing to tell us, you can't tell us that because the state legislature had not said specifically, although they said you can go on your streets, there's nothing in state legislature that says you can't tell the railroad where we can and can't go. So, Judge Dillon said, that's right, there's nothing in the state rules, statutes that says you can specifically tell the railroad where they can and can't go. So, railroad would tell Main Street. And I think that in modern times, in dealing with things like homelessness, like housing shortages, like environmental consequences, global warming, seasonal rise, all those things, we prefer to have global ability to control our own destiny. That's what we're at issue, we're not, but the downside is you could be associated with Seattle's action.
Okay, discussion.
Mr. Lor, we're not a second-class city, we're a code city. We have home rule, that's the whole point, and this is not going to change.
Go ahead, Mr. Lor, if you can respond to...
Okay, so, so the problem is, the problem is, if you're in Washington State, it's unfortunate that some of the courts don't consistently recognize the home rule authority of, of code cities. That's a problem as municipal attorney, we face this all the time because we get some court decisions where you have a code city attempting to exercise home rule authority, and some court at an appellate level is saying, no, 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 you can't do this because you don't have authority to do that. And so, the problem is, the courts in Washington State have been inconsistent. What we would hope to see in this, this court action here that's pending is a, is a good vehicle for the Supreme Court of Washington State to say, look, home rule, home rule really does mean home rule. And we would hope that the court would take that opportunity to enforce the viability and the effectiveness and the broad scope of home rule, whereas what we have been dealing with over the last several decades in Washington is uncertainty because the courts are not always consistent in acknowledging the broad scope of home rule power.
Anybody else?
So, I support this. I got the email earlier today, I was able to read the amicus brief in full. One of my, just in an attempt to provide some living, one of my favorite things is hearing different lawyers' comments on amicus differently. I also podcast, I've learned the process of the amicus, both of our lawyers here say amicus, so... But, you know, I think that reading the amicus brief, it, you know, it provides a really good fundamental understanding of that already we should have a good foundation for home rule in the statutes of Washington State, as it is already based on that 1960-something law. I, I think that we, as the city of Port Angeles, have a unique perspective on this issue, meaning that we went through the second-class city debate. And so, I think that given the Supreme Court of Washington, our unique perspective, which the amicus brief, you know, does in that underlined section, it would be invaluable to that, to that effort. And so, you know, that's really what amicus brief is supposed to do. It's supposed to say, you're deciding this case, but we have a unique perspective that we think is really valuable in that decision that you're going to go through in understanding that case. So, you know, with respect to the kind of the number of this, I think local government is the best government, is the closest to the people, is the most accountable to the people. And so, it, it holds this unique, you know, place where if we say that, no, our state government is more important than our local government, our citizens have less power to change their government. They have less power to influence their government, they have less power to check their government. And I think that's fundamental to the American system. We often hear people talk about states' rights and our national politics, and on some level, they have a point. Our states are supposed to have more direct power over what happens in their state than the federal government. But the extension of that is our localities are supposed to have more control over what happens in their locality than their state or their federal government. And so, I think that this is a really important thing for us to join. And, you know, I, I think that with regards to the, the risk of being allied, you know, seen as an ally to the city of Seattle as it tries to impose some sort of income tax, you know, I think that a few, maybe it was last year, Seattle went through the head tax debate. I think that provides a really instructive, you know, understanding of how things are supposed to work. Seattle, the city of Seattle proposed a tax that was somewhat unpopular, they had good intentions. They received intense criticism from their local constituents, from their citizens, from their business groups, from interest groups. They received intense criticism. They then legislatively overturned their own action. That's how the system is supposed to work. It's not supposed to be, we do something, good or bad, contentious or not, and then a court steps in and tells us whether or not we have authority to do it. The citizens of that area are supposed to be in control of that government. And so, I support this resolution, and I move that we join this amicus brief through this resolution as read.
Aye.
And adopt it.
So, we have a resolution on the table, and a second.
Two things, well, a couple things. First of all, just a quick question, why, why is it due tomorrow?
Court has lined.
Okay. And I, I'm gonna say this in, in all due respect, but I, I have to tell you that a little bit of foreplanning on your part does not really, should not constitute an emergency on our part. Please take that for what it's worth. And so, I, based on Mr. Lor's analysis of this, and I haven't really been able to read it thoroughly, and again, I don't appreciate it being dumped on my guest the moment of, but I, I do believe the concept is sound. But you always say, Lindsey, trust but verify? And I have not had the opportunity to verify. But having said that, and also giving you my admonishment, I, I think I fully support this.
Your admonishment is always yours.
Ditto, Councilmember Ryan. So, I, this was dumped on our dies tonight when we came in. We haven't read it, we haven't studied it, we haven't done any research. And our votes stand as a permanent record. We are responsible for everything we vote on, and we have to vote knowledgeably. That's our responsibility to the citizens of Port Angeles and to ourselves. But just, just glancing through this, that's all the time I have, just, you know, last couple of minutes. At page nine, regardless whether Seattle's tax is considered an excise tax or a sui generous income tax, it is permissible under broad legislative authority. And then, page 10, Seattle's tax authority is conferred by RCW 35A.11.020 to oppose the tax on income, whether the tax is considered an excise tax or general income tax, or Seattle should be able to lawfully raise revenue by the actions of its solicited body for the purpose of taxation. Page 11, as a first-class city, Seattle was expressly authorized to impose excise taxes under three statutes. First statute, second statute, and third statute about all powers of taxation for local purposes. Page 12, the court should recognize Seattle's autonomy and local governments who exercise its powers and legislative authorities and the, and all powers of taxation. I, I'm not involved in Seattle's taxation, and I really, there's page after page after page of corroborating evidence to back this up, saying this is about Seattle's right to tax, tax, tax. That's not what I'm here to do. I cannot support this.
Make this brief and simple. Seventeen pages, it was seven, two o'clock this afternoon. I actually did read it about five o'clock, and I happened to see it in there. I'm simply not going to vote in favor of this because I'm not in favor of anything being stuck in front of me on the day of, this seventeen page is long, it is a legal brief, and our vote does go on the record permanently. So, I, I will not support this.
Madam Mayor and Council, I think it's really important for me to point out some accountability in the regard of timing here. I did have a conversation with Councilmember Sherman Warren last week, and he, he did ask for it to potentially be put on the agenda in advance of this meeting. I think it's really important that we've heard clearly from council that before an item is added, they want to ensure that there's a consensus of four to add, add an item to the agenda. That does not mean you have to approve it the same night, but it was my suggestion and recommendation, and based on the council advice that I've received, I would probably do it again to recommend that Councilmember Sherman Warren move this forward to get a consensus of four so that then it can be carried forward for a discussion and our decision. So, I am accountable for the last-minuteness of this and that we, we want to respect all council members and make sure you're not surprised by something. But ultimately, I do think it's really important that we take an approach that's respectful of all council members, making sure that we have four individuals who want to bring it up for discussion before it moves forward. And in this case, that's the approach that was taken. And I don't think it would be fair to Mr. Sherman Warren to leave me out of the discussion relative to the last-minute issue.
I also got it earlier today and had some time to look it over. I think it's a good idea for us to join other cities, and I think it is important to note, as has, to restate, as has already been noted, that this includes the Association of Washington Cities, a group of which we are a member. And so, their legal counsel has also been very involved in this process. And I think when we have an opportunity to, as a group, voice our concerns about home rule status to the legislature by way of the Supreme Court, or to the courts by way of the Supreme Court, I think that we should take that opportunity. We're not having to create this on our own, and we do have a unique experience that I think is worth sharing.
Is there any supporting information from the Association of Washington Cities force?
I didn't look for that specifically, it would have been a decision by the board.
Discussion.
So, I just want to respond to the, the tax part of it, and I take that, like, you know, I don't want to be associated with a brief that's saying, yes, Seattle can raise all the taxes it wants. One thing to consider is, if we take away the ability of localities to control their own things, it's much easier for citizens to stand up to their local governments and say, hey, stop taxing me, than it is to stand up to their legislature and say, hey, stop taxing me. Our legislature has staff members and all sorts of things that they do, and, you know, to their credit, sometimes they acknowledge that they do some of their tricks with property taxes and rainy day funds. But, you know, it's, the local government is most accountable. If we, as a group, were sitting there during our utility tax presentation, say, hey, let's move to increase our utility taxes to 12% on this category, our citizens during that public hearing would rail at us rightly so, and we would be accountable to them. Citizens do not have that same ability or, or, you know, have a restraint ability to do that to their legislature. It's all the way to Olympia, it's, you know, a much more complex process that involves legalese and, you know, it's so... Making sure that the citizens have an opportunity to oppose taxes at the local level rather than the state level gives more opportunities for citizens to make their voices heard by the country's taxes.
Just wanted to add briefly that, yes, in statute and in the state constitution, there's home rule power. But if the court says there isn't, then there isn't. And, you know, the court can say that food is red and that chicken is beef, but, you know, ultimately, that's what lies. So, while, you know, it's written in the statute what it just means, this is a case where the trial court said the opposite in what the Dillon's rule. That's not a comment... That's not uncommon, as our city attorney mentioned, Hugh Smithser, who wrote the article, which was referenced by Smithser when he drafted some work for us last year, the article, Home Rule versus Dillings Rule for Washington Cities, he refers to Dillings Rule as zombie jurisprudence. It emerges from the dead, like, it should be dead, but keeps coming back. And here, once again, it's come back, like zombie jurisprudence, in Smithser's words. And I think it's important that we join with other cities in saying, no, this is a serious issue for the reasons that others have mentioned here. So I understand that, you know, it is there on the rule books, but ultimately, it's the court that gets to interpret what those words mean. And here, we have the opportunity to fend off a bad interpretation, and hopefully work toward a good interpretation of home role power. And yes, that does mean that we come down on the side of supporting Seattle's authority. That doesn't mean that we're supporting Seattle's policy as good public policy. It means that we're supporting their authority to decide at the local level what is best for their citizens' health, safety, and welfare.
All right, Sam, I have another question. Can, if we agree to do this, can we drop out later on? I'm just saying that, you know, as, right now, I totally understand what you said and what you said, and yes, it's true, this was dropped off, and I did not get to read it, I'm afraid, the last couple days, I've been kind of concentrating on something else, and have not opened it, you know, so this has come a little bit of a surprise. So, but I'm thinking that if we do, if we do this, and then, because it's counsel, we can actually agree to not do this later on. I'm just wondering how easily can we drop out and start out?
Not very.
Okay, I'm like, what? There's a question, Sam.
Okay, so, most likely, if the council approves this, I will go ahead and submit the papers to the attorney in Olympia tomorrow. He's waiting on some other cities who may be considering the same thing that you're considering, and probably this would be actually filed with the court by the end of this week. So there's a little opportunity actually to reverse it.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, I appreciate the fact that we do want to protect the home role. That is one of the things that I hadn't realized, how much jeopardy it was, you know, depending on a judge rather than on what we believe is home role. But, you know, in this sense, you know, it's just, we think we have home role, but to find out that we may not have home role the way we think we have home role is important to me. So, so I will, I will support this. I do wish it had come over, but it might have come over, and I do sometimes have pretty set boundaries at work. I am going to work on this, I'm not even going to look at others. So if anything needs to happen further, give me a call. So, anyway. So we have a motion on the table, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in, all those supporting the motion, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed? No.
No.
Okay, so we have two noes and five yeses. All right, thanks for the counsel. We have, onto council reports, so, it's getting, do you know what for? Okay?
No report.
I just have a quick report. I enjoyed doing the welcome for Crab Fest last weekend. Time flies, but I think it was last weekend, the Saturday of Crab Fest. I gave a presentation and was really glad to be there to watch the Laurel Alwak tribes' dance, and their group came and sang some songs, and Chairman Francis Charles gave a really nice welcome, and he was nice to get part of that. And glad to see that despite the rain, it did get plenty for most of the weekend, and I had to turn out.
So I apologize, it's been a busy couple of weeks. So on October 4th, I attended a workshop by the United Way in Oklahoma, in intergenerational poverty. I know W. R. Dexter and City Manager West were also there. It emphasized once again the need for stable, supportive, and safe housing, and early childhood support, like universal daycare and preschool. That's not something that we have had a conversation about yet, but it was important to note that we have fewer available spaces and daycares in Port Angeles now than we did a few years ago. And this is not just a social issue, it's also an economic development issue for us at the point. We can talk about that more later. On October 5th, I attended the Association of Washington Business Manufacturing Center, lots of technologies recycling center, along with our book and representative Chapin. I just want to say, I really appreciate the think tank discussions, such as our discussion on October 9th, and it's an important opportunity for us to talk about possible policy directions and moving. So I'm glad that we're having those conversations, being able to do them in a space with all the councilable to attend. I also attended Billiken Street Safety Open House on October 10th, and I enjoyed those discussions with fellow residents in Zink Stack. I was a little bit guilty because I didn't identify myself as a city council member, so I was going to be standing next to a lot of people from the public, having these kind of conversations about streets, and it was great. But, you know, I was originally opposed to this idea presented primarily by the consultant about a traffic light at Third and Lincoln, and the consultant kept bringing it up, and I kept saying, no, I don't think this is a good idea. But finally, he showed me the data from the little traffic study that was done there. And basically, you know, traffic going downhill and getting turning left on the third, 95% of the time, there'd be at those two cars waiting to turn left on the third. And that helped to convince me that, you know, the concern I had wasn't actually a concern, and we had the data to back up the belief. But that's part of the challenge, I think, with how important it is for us to share the data we have publicly, especially as we move forward with something that everyone has an opinion on, like traffic outside of State Way. I want to thank Director Brackey for taking time to meet last night. We discussed the multifamily tax exemption, the policy issues that we decide on with the correct help bars to estimate the residential target area for the tax exemption, and also any other requirements to tax incentive. We also discussed possibly changing the state environment policy act, the sublevels for multifamily housing, which many other states have done. We also briefly discussed a few streets and licenses in the zoning code. I want to share that discussion, kind of what we talked about, as one of the best practices suggested by the Association of Washington Cities and Municipal Research Service Centers, October 11 webinar, Uneffective Local Leadership, which several of us attended, along with the city manager. And one of those best practices was to communicate policy directions, or policy discussions between a single council member and staff back to the whole council. So I want to share what Director Brackey and I discussed briefly. And that's because we have a lot to do as a legislative body, and we need to move forward together to do it. Huge shout out to Parks and Rec for Saturday, that was amazing, and I understand that the Facebook announcement got 13,000 reaches. So that's like two-thirds of Port Angeles saw the Facebook announcement for that. So, yeah, great job to Parks and Rec. I didn't get a rooter for them too long and blind. And I want to finally join, I joined Councilmember Marianne this morning at the senior center, and I want to thank you for making and making that space, or interacting with the volunteers that participated at the senior center. Following on our tour with the Laurel Alwak tribes' facilities, I had the opportunity to talk with Kim Williams, who is the tribes' education field specialist, and is interested in some like habitat improvements in our urban salmonberry streams. So she's going to do a presentation for the council on urban steering and terrain zones. She's also willing to go on a field trip if we wanted, and has also suggested a community-wide laser plant pooling parties, pooling parties on the urban streams. After our think tank discussion, we've heard a lot of positive feedback, thanks to the Cincinnati Daily News coverage, about urban steering quarter trails, and I think that following up with Kim Williams on some routine would help move that issue forward. I look forward to our upcoming council staff retreat next week, on Friday, October 26th, from 9:00 to 3:00. Last year, myself and another city resident were the only two non-staff, non-council members in attendance at the two-day retreat in spring. I found it really worthwhile, so I don't think we have a location here, but it is definitely worth attending as a member of the public on October 26th for most of the day. Also, finally, I'll be unable to attend our meetings on November 13th, 20th, and 27th due to travel, but I will be at the November 6th and December 6th meetings. Thank you.
Okay, so I also attended a lot of things. I was at the Port Angeles Downtown Association meeting the other night. We got a recap of the Arts Fair and Special Festival, but anyone's information about that, you can give it. The mayor and I went to the high school, and met with a classroom of kids from a leadership, and we had a really great time, a lot of great questions. Of course, a lot of us were at the Housing Task Force, I thought that went really well. I also attended that, you know, some leadership training. I got a lot out of it, I took a lot of good news. Also attended the Lake and Street Open House. The one thing that occurred to me was the, it's kind of, I don't know if it's inside the area of interest, but the intersection of Third and Laurel, is one that I have a friend who lives within that block, half block away, he expresses a lot of concern about the use of that intersection being really dangerous. There's one other thing, but the big thing I want to talk about was the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission, we were at their last meeting, and we had a really great discussion. I also met with Director Brackey about the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission, as it was, you know, one of the big discussion points, I think, at the Logic Tax Advisor Committee meeting. And we had a really good discussion, and I've had this discussion, I had probably four meetings about that committee, both meeting with people on that committee and outside, about, you know, trying to see that the direction of that committee, which, for those that might not know in the audience, is a regionalization effort to say, hey, how can we cooperate on a regional message for marketing, and how can we share resources and kind of, you know, take this broader picture of what we want? Because we're all individually doing all the same things, and so there's a lot of savings that we could have if we kind of joined together in efforts. And it's been a really big learning opportunity for me, sitting on that order at a, you know, room full of people that are really deep into a lot of expertise in marketing. So discussions we had about policy were kind of, how do we, you know, change their focus towards the digital world? Marketing is still, you know, many cases mired in printings and mailers and things like that, which are showing less and less effectiveness as the demographics of the average tourist changes over time. So trying to see where we can go with the digital, which the OPTC is moving in that direction, but be more effective in how money is exchanged collectively. And so we had a really good discussion about that. But the one thing I want to share from the OPTC meeting, like I said, it's a room full of really smart people that have been doing marketing professionally for years and managed cases. The person that I always really step and listen when he talks, especially is Ryan Lee from Blackwall, and he gave kind of a year-end report for the COO that I just wanted to share a little bit. He says his visits are likely to be up at year-end. In 2017, they served around 450,000 trips, and they're estimating even higher to be probably around 475,000 for 2018. So that's a huge amount of traffic that's going through our downtown. He still reiterated, I mentioned this in a council report earlier, but a few, probably months ago, that it's hard to beat Canadians down for political reasons, but they're doing a lot of work on that, and they feel like that's done a lot to lessen the impact on our tourist community economy. And he also reported that the bus transport segment of their business, this is kind of their first year doing, really jumping into that market as, I can't remember the guy's name, retire, yes, there you go. And he said that it was a big learning year, and he says, it was successful, we suspect next year will be even more successful, we streamlined, and they're going to do a lot better. But they're definitely staying in that market, which is really important for our meeting. And he said the one cool thing was that 2018, through Blackwall, they served one person from each United States state and each Canadian province. So we have a really great diversity of our tourists.
I'm going to ask your indulgence, because I'd like to take a little bit different tack on the council reports. I'd like to talk briefly about the sudden passing of a close personal friend of mine, George Bergner. George passed away a couple of weekends ago, and he was not only a personal friend, but he was a friend of Port Angeles. George was an accomplished chef, and he was also active in the community. He was a member of the Port Angeles Business Association, Chamber of Commerce, and many other organizations. But one of his signature organizations was Port Angeles Likes Bikes. And several years ago, he started that to rally people around the simple idea of getting people on bikes for fun and transportation. Over the years, George donated hundreds of refurbished bikes and new helmets to kids in Port Angeles. He organized a kids' bike parade, Sherri, you may remember that, bike parade that people still talk about fondly today. George spearheaded the portable bike corral program in Port Angeles, offering free valet bike parking at Crab Fest, Wanda Fuga Festival, the farmer's markets, Lattes games, and more. Those big green racks downtown are a direct result of the corrals revealing a need for quality bike parking during summer and major events. George was also instrumental in helping Port Angeles become a designated bike-friendly community with a league, with a league of American bicyclists. He frequently collaborated with bike groups in Victoria, very often dragging me along, applying what he learned there to our city. George will be missed, and I suspect he's right now working in that big kitchen in the sky, and he probably got down on a bike.
Thank you, Jen. I've got just a couple of things. We went to the farmer's market, and there was a suggestion that to add classes at the senior center since the pool was very closed, so that was one of them during the construction time. And also that we need to talk to the board about trucks using brake brakes, because they're feeling like that, that's definitely an impact to us. Also had to sit by to the students of Wutsu, so they are here, the next group is coming in January, and it's going to be the unofficial 45th year, so if they can be, that be covered, it would be great. The Housing Task Force happened, and I want to thank Rob from the P N on this great article. I thought that that was well done, and it really, I've heard more about that than anything else, so. So we've got three minutes, and I want to make sure that we have enough time for the city manager report and the public comment. So council, do you want to extend this to 10 minutes after 10? So, yes? All right. Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, a few things for you this evening. First, I'd like to again welcome James Burke as Director of Public Works and Utilities. We are so excited to have James back. I want to express great appreciation to the entire Parks and Recreation staff for making the Quinn, Reith, and Kittner Memorial Park such a special occasion, as well as such a special place for the community. That was extremely meaningful. I think it's important to highlight our budget work session next week that goes from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM on October 23rd here in council chambers. Also, on October 27th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, as already mentioned, during the council retreat, right now, tentatively, it is looking like probably Peninsula College will be the location.
Wait, is that a change in the date?
26.
October 26th, my apologies as I say it wrong.
You said the 27th?
Well, I'll be there on Friday, so.
26, 26. I wanted to mention as well that we did have Public Works and Utilities take a look at the National League of Cities service line warranty opportunity that was provided in your box a week or so ago. And based on some of the testimony that we received, as well as some of the delegations that was done by Public Works, we, excuse me, we probably wouldn't recommend moving forward with that at this time, and we'd be happy to answer additional questions. If there are questions, feel free to approach staff afterwards. But that's it for city manager information.
Thank you. All right, public, it's the second public comment, so if you would like to speak to council on the panel, please come to the mic, state your name, and whether you were in the city.
I live in the city. Actually, I have a complaint. Hurricane Bridgeman has had a lot of work done on it by the parks system, and one day, they've done all kinds of things, but they installed a rumble strip to alert people that there's going to be a stop soon. This rumble strip is really loud. It sounds like an air wrench goes brrr, brrr, every time a car goes over it. And it's loud enough that I can hear it in my house with the doors, the windows closed. And some of my neighbors can also hear this. And it's not so bad during the day, but on weekends and nights, in the evening, especially on weekends, it is, just goes off constantly, because it's every car coming down the road, we hear it. I was wondering if there's I was wondering if there's any way that, since this is impacting city residents, if there's any way it quiets us down, maybe with some rubber surface or anything, because it is nerve-wracking.
Thanks. Thank you.
Once again, my name is Roger Niedefer, and I am a resident of Port Angeles. In my original speech, I don't come in just to complain, but to me, your website says to spend a hun, for every hundred dollars we spend here locally, 70 goes back to the public. But I find it hard to do that, because there's no commerce here to do it. You've got to go swim, you've got to go to other places, and I see fanaticas, the quarry, all these empty buildings just shutting down since I've been here, and it just concerns me that we're not growing the city. I'm really concerned about that. And then the Park Avenue speed over there, I encourage someone to go canvass the parks over there, St. Andrews, Senior Center up there, and we've got rage going on, we're getting flipped off as neighbors, excuse me, screaming and hollering at us and all kinds of stuff, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to address just one quick thing. The quarry actually moved into the county out by, by the former, I just want to make sure.
No, I understand it. But you could put those empty buildings, you have a visitor center there.
I do get that, yeah. I just wanted to make sure.
All right, anybody else who would like to address counsel?
Please, further next to me.
Thank you. All right, guys, we are adjourned.